First up on the agenda is remote electronic attendance.
Your Honor, I would like to make a motion to approve the remote electronic attendance of First Ward Alderman Scott Williams, Second Ward Alderman Alvaro Macias, Third Ward Alderman Mike Went, Fourth Ward Alderman Matt Timian, Fifth Ward Alderman Sam Moyer, Sixth Ward Alderman Pat O'Brien, Seventh Ward Alderman Michael Waldron, Alderman Wald, James Patrick Schmidt, and Mayor Raya Putty at the Committee of the Whole and Council Meetings of January 25th, 2022.
Thank you. That was seconded by Mr. Went? Yep, thank you. So, motion of Alderman Moyer, seconded by Mr. Alderman Went. Roll call, please.
Alderman Waldron.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
Thank you. That motion passes. Our second item is an oath of office for permanent appointment for Emily Kozleridge to the position of Community Service Officer effective December 20th, 2021. Chief Galt, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Can everybody hear me okay? All right, great. Well, these are certainly one of the most fun times for me to be in front of you, to introduce you to new employees at the City of Moline, and particularly the Moline Police Department. And today, I'm honored to be in front of you, to introduce you to Emily Kozleridge. She was hired on September 20th, 2021 as a Community Service Officer, an Animal Control Officer for the City of Moline. She has completed her probationary period and is being sworn in tonight as a fully commissioned CSO. Emily was born and lived in the City of Moline until she graduated high school, and then moved to the St. Louis area for around nine years, where she attended Southern Illinois University Edwardsville and worked at the Metro East Humane Society. While in Edwardsville, she began her career with animals and also where she fell in love with animal welfare. Upon moving back to the Moline area, she began working at the Rock Island County Animal Care and Control Facility in Moline, where she was able to learn more about the animal control, rules and regulations, and animal adoptions. She worked at this facility for three years before applying for the CSO position at the Moline Police Department. I can tell you when we were doing application interviews for the position, Emily's qualifications jumped right out at us, and we were really excited that she accepted the position, because she comes with a lot of great background, particularly in animal control, and has already hit the ground running to help us out. She's handled already 12 animal abuse cases, 12 animal bite complaints, 114 animal complaints, 19 lost or found animals. She's also tagged 106 abandoned vehicles, covered crossing guard duty 13 times, assisted in traffic control seven times, for a total of 353 calls just since September. And prior to that, while we had a odd year gap, where we didn't have a CSO, the police officers were handling all of those calls. So, we're so excited to have this level of service restored. And one of the things that jumped out at me was Emily had sent me an email about her bio, and she said, "Animal welfare is one of the most important things to me, and being in a position where I can educate others and use my skills to help people and animals of our community is exactly where I need to be. I look forward to a long career here with the Moline Police Department." Now, some of you, particularly Alderman Williams, probably recognize the last name, Kozleridge. Her father Bruce retired not long ago after a 30-year stellar career with the Moline Police Department. And in fact, the Kozleridge family has been involved in public service for over 60 years, including the Illinois State Police, the Rock Island County Sheriff's Department, the Moline Police Department. So, we are very lucky to have such a qualified applicant and a storied family to continue a tradition of public service for the City of Moline. So, Mayor, if you would, I'd ask you to come forward and swear in and give the oath of office to Emily Kozleridge.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you. Emily Kozleridge.
Hi, Emily Kozleridge.
Having been duly
having been duly appointed as a Community Service Officer for the City of Moline, Illinois. For the City of Moline, Illinois.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Support the Constitution of the States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the position of Community Service.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the position of Community Service Officer for the City of for the City of Moline, Illinois.
According to the best
according to the best of my ability. Thank you so much.
Give her a virtual round of applause.
So, as is tradition with a uniform-sworn officer, just to pin their badge on, I usually ask if they'd like to have a family member come forward. As I mentioned, Father Bruce Kozleridge served with the City of Moline Police Department. I'd like to have him come forward and pin the badge on. I don't want to talk there.
Madam Clark? The next item on our agenda is Mayor's appointment of Bill Allison to the Plan Commission for a six-year term to expire June 30th, 2027. Alderman, are there any questions on this appointment? Okay. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, recognition of Plan Commissioner John Wetzel by Mayor Raya Putty.
Thank you so much for being here with us, Mr. Wetzel. We have a wonderful plaque to commemorate your more than four decades of service to the Moline Plan Commission. And I have to say, your commitment to this community is evident even in that short time that I've gotten to know you. I think many of us that are serving right now were we ones when you started, and I don't think we can properly thank you enough for being a part of making this city what it is for us now as leaders and people who are continuing the work you have of looking to the future and making plans for the City of Moline. So, we are so very, very thankful for your service. And I wanted to share with you the words from one of your colleagues, and I think he speaks for many, Mr. Jeff Nelson of Metro Lake. For many years, John Wetzel has played an important and impactful role as part of the Moline Planning Commission. He has provided leadership, stewardship, and guidance to help frame growth in the City of Moline. I'm thankful for the mentorship he provided to me personally and for his unwavering commitment to this great city. Thank you, John, for your service and more importantly, your friendship. So, congratulations, and thank you so much.
Within over four decades, as Mayor mentioned, that was back in the pencil and eraser days. As the city moves forward and embarking on the new comprehensive plan, we'll look forward to the results of that, and we'll be watching each other both sides.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
It's amazing how the city has changed in 44-plus years, and then hopefully it will continue to change for the next 50 years or so.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for sharing those thoughts. Yes. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Good. Thanks. Thank you, councilpeople, too, for your support.
The next item on our agenda is a presentation by Director of Utilities Tony Lodi, wholesale drinking water rate.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I wanted to give you an update and some information on our progress toward your goal 3.3C, which is to maximize the water plant's excess capacity. And there's been some recent developments that have prompted us to come to you earlier than we would have normally planned to do so. As a point of background, the water system is comprised of a treatment plant that's rated to produce 12 million gallons per day, and the water distribution system is simple in that it's a single pressure zone, and we pump it out to that single pressure zone that contains 2 and 1/4 million gallons of elevated storage in our three storage tanks. We've got the 7 million gallons of storage at the treatment plant. And then if you look at our max day, that's one of the measurements of use by a water system. The max days in comparison to the rated capacity of the treatment plant, there's somewhat of a difference there. And that's because of the challenge we face and all water systems face in this day, in that we are continuing to see per capita water use decline. And then, as you know, Moline's population's relatively flat. So, you know, we've got this modern water treatment plan and a very robust water system, and we've got this excess capacity that we can look at as an opportunity also. We can take that opportunity to market that excess capacity to neighboring jurisdictions, or also maybe we can lure an industry into town that has a need for, or is highly reliant on water. And this opportunity is here because Molineers of the past, leaders such as yourselves that served on the council, and I believe Alderman O'Brien was on the board at the time, voted to make $24 million of improvements in the water treatment plant. And we'll be celebrating two years from now when that $24 million in debt is retired. And so, we've got this tremendous asset that's available to our community, and there's an opportunity for us to partner with neighboring communities that may face the same investment needs. And those of you that may be aware, that we had some discussions with Coal Valley all the way back in 2018, and Alderman Went asked a question a few weeks ago about where we are with Coal Valley, and so, we re-engaged with them just a few weeks ago. Mylan has made it no secret to us that they are interested in partnering if their community continues to grow to the south. Their water system is not robust enough to serve that area, and so, they're looking for opportunities to partner. You all are aware that the U.S. Army and Rock Island Arsenal, we've had discussions with them in the past, and they're facing a need to modernize their treatment plant if they plan to continue on with it. But these opportunities are there for these neighboring jurisdictions. But really, the reason we're here today is because there's a recent development in Silvis in that they've had some failures in their water system and caused them to open their emergency interconnections with East Moline, and that emergency interconnection is underserving them at this point. So, they're looking at some different options on how to approach this long term. One option is to install treatment for themselves, which would be very expensive. Another option is to look at bolstering their connections with East Moline. And they've already been in contact with East Moline and in talks with them, and East Moline has the advantage of proximity. But they're also looking at a connection to us and have engaged in some discussion with us. Real briefly, our water distribution system is shown on this graphic, and those that came before me did a good job in laying it out, because those blue lines on the page represent the transmission mains of our system, and they extend all the way out to the furthest-most reaches of the system. You can see all the way over on the left side of the page in light blue, the light blue jurisdiction is Mylan. The yellow jurisdiction is Coal Valley, so we're poised to connect to them if needed. And many think that Silvis is somewhat of a stretch, but in reality, along our southern borders, we're really not that far away. So, there is potential for that, and we're exploring that at this time. So, staff's been working on a financial model on what we would charge to a wholesale customer, a regional jurisdiction like Silvis or Coal Valley and others. And we've developed a rate that includes costs from our administration, laboratory, production, conveyance, and storage. Those are costs that the Moline ratepayers are already paying. And so, we've taken pieces of those costs and incorporated them into a rate. And then, we've also developed the cost that it what it costs us to produce the next 1,000 gallons of water. So, when we add that, those incremental pieces of overhead to the actual production cost, as well as something known as property, plant, and equipment, those are the vital assets of the water system that Molineers have already paid to develop. And the utility has assets in excess of $100 million. And so, you know, if we're going to bring a wholesale customer on board with us, we need to come up with what a fair charge is to that customer in relation to what Molineers have already paid. And then, we would also need to develop a base rate for them, and that would need to be determined based on whichever jurisdiction we're talking to. So, really, the point of bringing this information to you tonight is just to let you know that we are talking to Silvis. They have a timeline of the first quarter of 2022 to finalize decisions for themselves. And I would welcome you to contact me if you're interested in diving into the details of the rate that we've developed. And I've met with a few of you on that, and I have massaged the numbers somewhat. And the bottom line is that, you know, if we get to the point in talks with them, Bob and I would bring you back some conceptual numbers that you would all need to approve and, you know, give us direction on. So, really, my point is just to let you know we're working towards goal 3.3C. And, you know, if you have any questions, I'll be glad to take them now.
Me?
Yes, Mr. O'Brien?
Okay. I'd just like to thank Tony for the work he's done on this, because if I remember, when we built the water plant, or it was around the time we went to other municipalities and asked for them to share a water plant, and back then, it was like, well, we don't want Moline's cooties, or whatever it was. They were just dead against it. And now, I'm glad to see that the other municipalities are coming on board and realizing how expensive a water plant is. So, good work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other questions from the council at this time? Mr. Went?
Oh, yeah. Thank you, Your Honor. Tony, thank you very much for bringing this up, and I had an opportunity to chat with Tony about this and kind of look at the rates and kind of the approach. And I guess what I'd like to say is, I mean, obviously, whatever rate we come up with, covering the actual cost of each additional 1,000 gallons is a no-brainer. But what we have to remember is, and I think this is part of the problem we ran into previously with Coal Valley and a few different things, if we are just basically producing additional gallons at a plant that can go up to 12 million, and we're using a fraction of that, that any dollar over the production cost reduces the cost to our residents. And so, I encourage you to sharpen that pencil. You know, I'm not going to get into the numbers that we looked at, but some of them, I think, really could be reduced to coincide with actually what the transmission line is to actually get out there, what the actual cost for additional administrative costs and those sorts of things. I think that we should really encourage that. Sitting on the Illinois side of the river, we all know that there is not unlimited resources, and we have to work together, or we are going to drown together. And so, by doing these sorts of things, we can improve, make a better situation for our residents, reduce their costs slightly, but also be able to provide and not gouge our neighbors and provide them with a better product and really integrate the Illinois Quad Cities. And I'd really like to encourage us to look, if we're working with Silvis, the southernmost connection around John Deere Road and up, because what that, as we all know, development follows water and so does annexations. And so, if we want to be a city that's going to expand, and we've got the water up and down John Deere Road, when that develops, that'll then be included into Moline. So, I really encourage, and I'd like to and I don't know if you're looking for direction from council of like, hey, let's come up with a rate. As we discussed, I'm okay with coming up with a rate specific to each community. Obviously, the extra capacity that we're selling off now is not as valuable once we get up to 75, 85% of our capacity. But when we're down in the 50s or lower, that capacity is something that we really use to partner with our neighbors and make the Illinois Quad Cities better for everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Went. Anyone else on the council? I'm not seeing any hands. Okay, thank you, Mr. Lodi. We'll move to our next item, which is questions on the agenda, and I believe you've been sent the newest one on the COW agenda, item number 10, the CTC agreement will be discussed after item 1 this evening. So, it'll go CODA Metrics, CTC, ARPA, childcare, and so on. Yes, Mr. Moyer?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to ask that item number 1 off the council agenda, 1008-2022, be taken off the consent agenda, so we can discuss it a little bit more.
Number 1.
On the council agenda.
On the council agenda.
Which is Council Bill 1008-2022, Your Honor.
Oh, I see. Yes. Clerk, can you, and legal counsel, can you confirm that the appropriate time to do that is now or at the?
No, this is the right time. Thank you. And I am moving that to the non-consent. Thank you, Alderman Moyer.
Thank you.
We don't need a second on that at all?
No. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. All right. So, number 1, CODA Metrics Agreement for Form-Based Code, Mr. Vitas.
Good evening, everybody. It's good to see you all again. And it gives me great pleasure to advance the next strategic goal forward, which is the Form-Based Code Project in the Community and Economic Development Department. And I want to, I believe that Alex, you are on, yes?
Yes.
Is Leslie also on?
Yes.
There you are. Okay, thank you, Leslie. I have a little screen, and I didn't bring my glasses, so I'm squinting. Don't mind me, not staring at anybody. But anyhow, I'm happy to report that we were able to, after a long spell of airing the RFP, as you well know, as well as bringing forward a committee to review the great outpouring of interest that we had. And I believe there were seven different companies. We ended up interviewing five of those through the committee, and we came back with the recommendation that CODA Metrics would be the right fit for the City of Moline's first Form-Based Code effort. And we're recommending approval of that agreement that was put together by our law firm, Hansel &amp; Klink, reviewed, and subsequently then approved also by CODA Metrics, and presented to you tonight as approval and agreement that would be not to exceed the amount of $197,817 in order to fit our Form-Based Code for downtown. And with that, there are questions. That's great. But I think Leslie also had kind of a brief overview in case you were not part of some of those discussions on just the general process and procedures they'll follow going. So, you can introduce yourself, Leslie. I don't know if you're on mute or not, Leslie. Hello?
Leslie? We can't hear you, Leslie, if you're speaking. There we go.
There we go. Sorry. I had to find the hidden mute button. Good evening. We're really excited to be here tonight. What I thought I would do is just introduce our team for you so that you would be able to kind of start to get to know all of us. So, my name is Leslie Oberholzer. I am with, my firm is CODA Metrics. I'm in a suburb of Chicago. So, a quick drive to Moline, very excited about that. I have been writing Form-Based Codes for about 15 years across the country, maybe a little bit longer than that. And I will be your director of the project and serve as your main contact person.
Me.
I'm very excited to bring this team together. I've worked with these people before, and I love working with them. Sam Schwartz will join our team, and Altogether will join our team. And I'm going to let Alex Hansen with Sam Schwartz and Abigail Rose with Altogether introduce themselves. Alex, do you want to go?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. We're excited to be here and getting started with the project soon. My name is Alex Hansen. I'm a transportation planner and associate with Sam Schwartz Consulting. We're a national transportation planning and engineering firm, but I'm based here in Chicago as well. And Sam Schwartz is really focused on helping cities create safe, efficient, multimodal transportation systems that enable choice for a diverse range of users and also are prepared for the many ways transportation and mobility are changing and will continue to change in the coming years. So, we'll be leading the transportation inventory component of the project and working closely with Leslie and Abigail and the entire team to incorporate those issues and opportunities into the Form-Based Code and its regulations. So, we're very, very excited about the project. We've had a great experience working Moline in the past and are excited to build on that.
Perfect. Thanks, Alex. I'm Abigail Rose. I am a planner and designer with Altogether Studio. We have kind of a trifold of branding, engagement, and placemaking, trying to make it fun throughout the process, trying to reach everyone, trying to have a different outreach ways and not having everything just be online, but some fun ways through pop-up events or through other events going on in Moline. I'm super excited to work in Moline. My father's mother, they had Baker's Dairy in Moline back in the day, so I'm really excited. I was there when I was a kid. So, I'm really excited just to be back in Moline and the Quad Cities. I'm happy to take any questions.
Yes, thank you very much. So, that's our team, and we are really excited to get started. Let's see if I can turn this off.
Can't hear you again.
We will have our, we're really excited, hopefully you didn't hear that, that we're really excited to get started. We will be having our kickoff meeting in February. We've started to gather base information, and our process will include lots of outreach. And we're very excited about branding and getting to know downtown Moline and producing the best Form-Based Code that we can. So, we'd love to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions from the council? All right. I don't see any. Thank you very much. Is there a motion?
Most do approve, Timian.
Nope.
Alderman Timian, motion, seconded by Alderman Went. Discussion? All right. Mr. Went?
Oh, I just want to say thank you, guys. Really looking forward to working with you guys. This is something that a number of us have been working on for our downtown is going to make an amazing difference long-term to ensure that we get the development that we want and the residents deserve. So, thank you. Really, really looking forward to it.
All right. Mr. O'Brien?
Just to remind you, the downtown does extend to the East Moline border. Just saying. That's, that's
Thank you for reminding everyone.
Do some work. Thanks.
All right. Here you go for their questions. Roll All right. Hearing no further questions. Roll call, please.
Alderman Waldron?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays?
All right. Thank you. That motion passes. Number two tonight is the CTC Agreement for Broadband, Mr. Vitas.
Hey, once again, Mayor and Council, it gives me great pleasure to bring forward another strategic goal from your plan, and that is our high-speed fiber optic broadband project and the retention of CTC Technology and Energy Engineering Consulting, who serve as our consultants going forward between now and the end of April, with the target date of May one, bringing this project forward for approval with a vendor specific to Moline to start to put together a new ISP provider and high-speed fiber optic broadband throughout the entire city of Moline, leaving no homes or properties behind in the process. Something that's important to the council and to this community, and, you know, long-term is of great significance in terms of future economic development here in the city of Moline. I know Adam Simon worked with me closely on this and through the agreement process and discussions with CTC. I don't believe anybody from CTC is on, or am I mistaken, Adam?
I didn't see anyone on the participant list from CTC.
Okay. All right. Very good. Anyhow, we're recommending approval of the agreement as it is presented to you tonight, taking into consideration specifically changes to Task Four, which we brought up at the last meeting and discussion. Both Adam and I are now comfortable that that does address council's concerns going forward.
Thank you. Mr. Went?
Yeah, I'd like to move to approve this moving forward with two stipulations. One, that the RFP is brought back to council to review before being published. And two, that the consultants prior to creating the RFP interview and speak with the broadband providers that are currently in the community.
Is there a second?
Second. Moyer?
All right. Discussion? Yes. Mr. Went, sorry. I was thinking through a process.
Thank you. Yeah, as you guys know, I was a proponent of doing this, because I think that we need competent people in the room, that this is what they do, and they know what they're doing. I think the addition of the two things are important. One, we kind of talked about it last time, that that's what was going to happen. As you read, as you read the current rendition of the agreement, they look at some websites and to try to get a feel for what is actually happening currently in the community. And I think it's important to have that conversation. You know, they don't have to fly in, doesn't have, I mean, it could be a Zoom call just to have a conversation and understand what is currently being provided, and possibly maybe even get some ideas of what their future plans are and that kind of stuff, to get a real feel for what's going on. And then the second is the RFP. As we've discussed a few times before, we think that it's really important that the council looks at the RFP and makes sure that this is asking for what we intend for it to ask, rather than it getting published and then trying to fix things after the facts. So that's why I'm supporting this with those two provisions, and that's why I moved it that way.
Your Honor, this is Alderman Waldron.
Yes, Mr. Waldron.
Bob, do you have any issues with these two proposals from Alderman Went? I've read the RFP, and I was satisfied with it. Is this something you can incorporate easily, or is this something you have a concern about?
Let me address both issues. I'll start with the RFP. I fully expect that the RFP brought forward by CTC Technology is going to fully address the issues concerning what the marketplace is here in Moline, very specifically in terms of broadband, potential for broadband use. I think by sharing the RFP, it's just another step in the process. I don't, as long as we limit the discussions on that to a meeting, that would be great. I don't think we want to drag it on, because time is of the essence. May one, as you know, Alderman Waldron, the frost will be out of the ground. And I really want, I really want to see this project kick off in the, you know, in May, if possible, awarded, and have somebody actually start to work, whoever that is. The second issue, you know, I did go around a little bit with that on, with Alderman Went and with Adam Simon, and so if you're aware of it, I, you know, if it's a Zoom call, I don't think it presents a problem. I think, you know, knowing what AT&amp;T is doing, who has recently expressed an interest in this project, by the way, as of Friday or Thursday last week, it's the first I've heard from them. They were not a bidder originally, but they have a presence. And whether they speak with MediaCom, as well as AT&amp;T, as well as Geneseo Communications, I believe those are the only three providers. We're talking three Zoom calls. You know, I'll share that with David Pullman, with CTC, you know, and I don't think they'll have an objection, given what the project entails, as long as it's limited to just getting an understanding of, you know, the services they currently provide and what their future plans are. Those are two very specific questions.
Thank you, Bob. I'm just interested in keeping the project rolling, and I have an immense amount of competence in staff, and I just want to keep the project moving along. We all get a lot of phone calls. We all get a lot of concern about no alternative. And one of the things for me is to get moving. So I appreciate your answers. Thank you, Bob.
Welcome.
Any further questions from the council? All right. So we're clear on what you're voting on, this motion with these two stipulations as part of the process to move forward. Roll call, please.
Alderman Waldron?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays?
Thank you very much.
The motion passes. Thank you.
Your Honor, point of inquiry?
Yes.
Would it be possible, I just see that there is someone, Amy Clark is on the line for the pilot item on the agenda, and I have a feeling that the ARPA conversation is going to be a fairly long one. Would it be possible to move the pilot up one, so we can have that conversation to move that forward and not have her through the other?
Legal counsel, can you please advise if that's possible to do at this time?
Sure, that's fine.
Margaret, we do have multiple people here for the ARPA discussion as well. So, yes, Mr. Schmidt, did you have another follow-up question?
I think there's also someone here looking at issue number four on the agenda as well.
Okay. Ms. Margaret Kostopoulos?
I would advise at this point that somebody make a motion to adjust the agenda.
So, Your Honor, I'll make a motion to move the ARPA after the pilot and the sidewalk, because I think those two will move very quickly.
Is there a second?
Second, Schmidt.
Motion by Alderman Went, seconded by Alderman Schmidt. Discussion, discussion. Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Alderman Waldron?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays?
Okay, thank you. We'll adjust the agenda accordingly. So next up is the Pilot Cooperative Agreement with Metro Housing Authority, Rock Island County. Ms. Whitley?
Thank you, Mary Potty. Can you guys hear me okay? Okay. So the Greater Metropolitan Area Housing Authority is offering us a pilot agreement, which is a payment in lieu of taxes. Apparently, the property is tax exempt, so we're not receiving any taxes on the property. So basically, the agreement is allowing us to collect five percent of the money and the rents that they collect. Not that they bill out, because sometimes you don't always collect everything, but that they receive every year, and they'll pay that to Rock Island County in July, and then from Rock Island County, we'll get that five percent. I do have Amy Clark on the call. Amy, is there anything that you want to add into the conversation?
No, I don't think so. But just as a reminder, you know, our mission is affordable housing, and we purchased this property so that we could preserve and maintain affordable housing for the elderly in our community. But I also know that it used to be on the tax rolls, and making it tax exempt, you know, could be a little problematic. So again, as Kay said, we were asking to enter into this pilot agreement, because we felt that some payment in lieu of taxes was better than nothing. So that's us wanting to be a good community partner.
Thank you, Amy.
Move to approve?
Motion by Alderman Went. Is there a second?
Second, Moyer.
By Alderman Moyer. Discussion? Mr. Went?
Yeah, thank you. I wanted to thank KJ and Margaret for their due diligence going through and making some adjustments that I think more accurately represent what the agreement is. And so, thank you. And Amy, thank you very much for you and your organization supplying affordable housing here in Moline, and we look forward to you doing that for a very long time here. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Went.
Mary Potty, may I just remind the council that this is on the council agenda for consideration also?
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Alderman Waldron?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays?
Thank you. Motion passes. Moving to our number four now, sidewalk waiver for one thousand two, Twenty-seventh Street. Mr. Foley or Mr. Vitas? Mr. Vitas, are you speaking on behalf of us for Mr. Foley?
Yeah, I believe I am. I don't see Sean Paul, though he was here.
I'm on the call. I was just looking for the actual.
Okay, why don't you go ahead and take it, Sean?
Okay, so I was looking to get the, well, I was hoping to get it up on the screen here, but basically, it's the sidewalk variance that the applicant can probably explain it a little better than I could. So, it's okay. I think I'm going to put it up on the screen here as soon as I can get the thing to work. So for this, sharing the screen on this one, do I have to ask? So do you do that for me, or how's that work?
I have it on Google Maps, Street View, if you want me just to share it right now. Unless you have.
Well, I just have the application, actually. I don't know if everybody has that with them right now, where they could see it. But I got it on my screen. I just don't know with this particular.
Sean, there's a button at the bottom that says share with an up arrow. If you click that once.
Okay.
It shows what screen that file is on, and then hit share one more time. There you go.
All right. Do you see it now?
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Continue.
Okay, so we're on Tenth Avenue, East of Twenty-seventh Street, and this is provided by the applicant. So his property is over here on the east side of the picture. He's going to extend the sidewalk about sixty feet, which is this orange line here on the south side of Tenth Avenue. And the area for the variance is the rest of the way to Twenty-seventh Street. And this is the residence, and this is where the sidewalk would be extended towards this manhole cover and a little beyond that. And if you scroll down a little farther, this would be going west down Tenth Avenue, and you'll notice the terrain is very steep here. It's slope all the way to the curb, so we require retaining walls and things like that. Here's a little bit closer to Twenty-seventh Street. And on this next picture, here's Tenth Avenue again. And on the north side of the street here, it can't really be seen too easily, but there's a sidewalk all along the north side of the street on Tenth Avenue. So it's not like there is no sidewalk there. So the applicant basically has applied for the variance in order to pay for the payment in lieu of construction for that particular sidewalk. And he's on line two, and he can explain further, I guess, if you want him to talk.
Would you like to add anything, Mr. Olson? If I said your name correctly?
Yes, yes, you did. Thank you. Yeah, he covered that pretty well. It's just the terrain there is very steep when it approaches Twenty-seventh Street. So my concerns are, you know, mudslides all over the sidewalk and creating a slippery situation if we were able to even get it in there. So that's really the reason for this variance. And we do want to extend the sidewalk in front of the house, partly down the street, just so it looks nice, because there should be a sidewalk there. But when it gets to that steep terrain, that's just where we're asking for the variance for.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions from the council?
Move to approve?
All right. Or was that a question?
A second.
Mr. Went had his hand up.
I can ask it after.
Yes, that's correct. Motion by Alderman O'Brien, seconded by Alderman Moyer. Mr. Went?
Just for clarification, Sean, when you were just showing the screen, I thought I saw like an eleven thousand dollar number on your, what you were showing, but I think in our packet, it's like nine thousand nine hundred. I just want to make sure that we're clear on what we're voting on.
Mr. Foley?
Wait, yeah, okay. That's what I have in the application. I don't have like an email. Is this?
Mr. Olson, would you like to explain? You're muted, by the way.
All right. I'm muted on my phone.
Okay.
So, yeah, the reason for that is there's, I think there's four hundred twenty-seven feet of property line there, which comes out to, I was told, eight dollars a square foot to put a sidewalk in. That's where the total amount came from. So I'm not asking for variance for the entire four hundred twenty-seven feet, just the area where the terrain becomes not so good. So I am going to put a sidewalk in, so I will pay for that sidewalk. So the difference is how much I'm going to pay, eight dollars a square foot, what I'm going to put in, minus the total four hundred twenty-seven feet of the eight dollars square foot that the city told me. That's what I was supposed to estimate it at.
Thank you.
So these figures originally came from engineering, city engineering. Like he was saying, he's going to put in some of the sidewalk, so I don't really have like a breakdown of sidewalk versus payment in lieu.
Sean?
I'm sure there's a way we can craft it to, you know, cover the cost of what the variance is supposed to.
Thank you, Sean. Mr. Schenk has something to add.
Sean, who provided the cost from the engineering department?
My understanding is Laura Clower.
Okay. All right. I just wanted, I know who did that. I wasn't aware that we did, but if Laura did, that's fine.
Thank you very much. Mr. Moyer, did you have a question as well?
No. No, I was just going to explain that it was the difference.
Okay, great. So we've got that.
Cut through it a little faster.
Mr. Went?
So I just want to make sure that that's what we're agreeing, is option number two at nine, nine nine eight four, right? Nine thousand nine hundred and eighty-four.
That is correct.
Okay, I just don't want any confusion down the road, that everybody's on the same page. And I support it.
Okay. All right. So hearing no more questions or comments. Roll call, please.
Alderman Waldron?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Alderman Moyer? Alderman Moyer.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
Okay, thank you very much. That motion passes. All right, now to our current number five, ARPA Child Care and Workforce Development Infrastructure Forgivable Loan Program. Ms. Whitley.
Thank you again, Mayor Rayapati. As you may recall, last fall, council approved a half a million dollars for a childcare workforce program. Tonight, staff is asking for approval of the program. Uh, and consideration is being requested. But before I provide a brief overview, I would like to yield the floor to Jeff Cornelius. He is the chief uh operating officer at the Y. Jeff?
You're you're muted, Jeff, sorry. Still muted. It's on the bottom of the frame is the.
Jeff, can you hear us? We can't hear you, Jeff.
Yep. Oh.
Do you see a mute a mute button at the bottom, Jeff?
Still can't hear you. Do you have the phone number to call in? Okay, David, would you mind? David, would you mind uh set putting in the chat the phone number to call in?
Yes, I am right now.
Thank you. Do you have a phone you can call in on, Mr. Cornelius?
Host might be able to unmute him.
I I can only send a request for him to unmute. I can't unmute. It's the phone number and access code are in the chat now.
Sometimes next to the mute mute button, you have the arrow. If you click on it, you get all your microphone speakers, and that microphone might be set to a different one.
Thank you, Mr. Macias. We'll just give him a second. Counsel, you can stretch for a second. Webex is interesting. We'll wait for your thumbs up, Mr. Cornelius, that you've gotten in somehow, or then we'll have to move on. David, is that coming through?
Don't see a call-in user yet. I think he's gotta put in the access code possibly still.
Okay. Sounds like the sound of someone joining us.
Uh, I'm assuming that you can hear me now, hopefully?
Yes, we can. Thank you so much.
Holy cow. What what a way to start off. I I'm looking at my computer and it's not muted, so I sincerely apologize. I'm not exactly sure how or or why that happened, so.
All right, take it away, Mr. Cornelius.
Uh, well, after that uh introduction by Kay, um, that took place so long ago, I'll reintroduce myself. I'm Jeff Cornelius, uh, with the Two Rivers YMCA. Uh, so thank you, mayor and council, especially for your patience. Um, and uh I am also a Moline resident. So I just wanted to say to start off that I really appreciate having been a part of the development committee for this program. Uh, as many of you are well aware, childcare spots are critical for building a strong workforce. And uh that's from infants all the way up through school-aged children. Um, in our current environment, quality childcare spots can be very, very difficult for working families to secure. So that's exactly what this committee was uh in charge of looking at. How can we expand that? Um, what we find in the Quad Cities right now are that we need community leaders, business leaders, and municipal leaders. Um, you know, with this program, I believe that Moline really is establishing itself as the municipal leader uh for working parents. Um, additionally, please keep in mind that families shop uh and families eat near their daycare providers. So adding quality childcare in Moline will result in added business in the city as well. Uh, you know, so with with having waited that long for a short intro, thank you very much for being a part of this, and I look forward to hearing more about the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Whitley, can you continue?
Thank you, mayor, and thank you, Jeff. Uh, the proposed uh daycare program in front of you does two things. It encourages businesses and it provides additional daycare slots. Many of the people who have been on this workforce committee for the last five months are currently on the call. So between all of us, we hope to answer any questions that you might have as we go through an overview of the program. So with that being said, let me see if I can share my screen.
There we go. Thank you.
Okay. So let me start the slideshow here. Are you guys seeing that slide that says current situation?
Yes.
Okay. So as you know, the pandemic uh has really uh hurt our economy here, not only in Moline, but throughout the globe, uh, throughout the world. Um, but in Moline, let's talk about Moline. Um, we're trying to recover in our economy. Um, and so with the childcare program, it's gonna address the needs for our workforce to get back to work or for families or individuals to get back to living, to have a place to take their children that they know that is safe and secure in the city of Moline. Uh, in 2018, before the pandemic, a study was done by the Family and Community Services Partnership along with United Way. And at that time, it was discovered that we did not have adequate childcare before the pandemic. And then the pandemic didn't help it at all. And now post-pandemic, well, close to post-pandemic, we're still in a bad situation that we're trying to recover out of. There's still not enough childcare out there. So that's one of the reasons that this program that was brought forward in front of you guys. Uh, we're trying to get the workforce back out there, opportunities to have daycare coverage, not only eight to five, but also second shift on the weekends. You know, when you talk about nurses, you talk about emergency responders, they don't work a eight to five shift. So we know that there's a need for those hours to be covered if possible. So with this program that is funded through the American Rescue Plan Act, uh, we believe that that's gonna assist families and individuals that have been negatively impacted by COVID-19. So the program itself, uh, we want to improve the quality of childcare. We want to expand the slots that are available for childcare. Uh, and then also create uh development programs in those childcare facilities and homes for before and after school programs as well. Uh, the awards will be based on, I gotta switch screens here, I'm sorry. So I can talk into the camera. Um.
Just you have to stop sharing.
Oh, do I? Okay.
If that was what your plan was.
No, 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 that was not my plan. Can you see it now?
Yeah.
Okay, so I guess I have to keep it on the screen. Okay, learning a lot new tonight. Um, the words are based on the applicant's intent and ability to increase quality childcare slots. So if you're in existing daycare, you're adding more slots, you qualify. If you are starting a new business and you're creating additional daycare slots, you would qualify for this program as well. So again, we're encouraging entrepreneurs and existing businesses to apply for this grant, um, as well as the family childcare homes and home services. Uh, this program is gonna provide capital to businesses to buy additional equipment, and we do have a slide on that. Uh, this program is not to pay salaries at daycares, and it's gonna help stabilize Moline's economy. Who's eligible for the program? Individuals who are interested in opening up a licensed daycare, uh, community-based organizations. Uh, applicants must be willing to accept all children, disabled, uh, minorities, all children mu- must be welcomed at the daycares. And then what we're suggesting in this program is for open enrollment. So if I start a daycare and I'm approved for the first 10 days, I'm only accepting Moline residents' children's children, and then also people who work in a area, I mean, in Moline. So if I live in Rock Island, but I work over in Moline, I can bring my child to the daycare and enroll in that first 10 days of open enrollment. So there's five groups. Um, and each one of the groups, we've kinda assigned a total of that $500,000 and suggested the number of awards, and those are displayed on the screen here. Um, so if you guys have any questions on that, we can certainly answer those at the end of the uh presentation here. So the eligibility requirements, um, the businesses have to be open and operational for 36 months from when they receive funding. So for 36 months, you need to stay open and operational. Um, you must maintain compliance with all state and federal orders of COVID-19. The location has to be physically in the city of Moline, not in the county where Moline address is possible, but in the city of Moline. Uh, you must maintain compliance with the Illinois Childcare Licensing Standards, uh, be current or in a payment plan on all local, state, and federal taxes through 1-1 of 20, that should be 2022, not 2026, so that's a typo there, uh, and have an active and proper state license. Uh, be a United States citizen or entitled to work in the United States. And uh corporately-owned national or regional chain businesses are not eligible. However, local-owned franchise chain businesses are eligible. Um, examples of the grant eligible uh expenses. Again, salaries are not eligible under this grant, uh, but equipment, so from cribs to strollers, uh, to toys, um, minor building modifications, as long as you're not doing anything with a bearing wall. Um, you can do some modifications, either your home or the commercial building where your childcare is located at. Uh, fire safety, you know, smoke alarms, uh, things that the fire marshal, because the state fire marshal is gonna come through as well as our local fire marshal as you get your license, if you don't have a license already. Um, external modifications, so say you might need a handicap ramp. Uh, that's certainly allowable under this program. Uh, training and startup costs, some of the startup costs could be like insurance, uh, not only for the building, but maybe for a licensed vehicle where you transport the kids back and forth. So the scoring, the things that we're gonna look at, uh, we're gonna look at the completeness of your application. And we do get points for that, because a lot of times uh applications that we receive are not, receive are not complete. Uh, business retention, new. So if you're already in business, you're gonna get a certain amount of points for that. Or if you're a new business, you're also gonna get a certain amount of points for that. Uh, how it's meeting, how your program is gonna meet the community needs. Um, you know, on that essay, um, you're gonna get points for that. Uh, we do ask for you to provide some letters from community uh organizations, you know, whether it be Project Now, a local church, another daycare, uh, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, but another community partner, if you will. And then what's your business plan? Um, how do you plan to be open and operational for at least 36 months? Uh, with the money that you're receiving and that you hope to receive from the business itself. Uh, we want to take a look at a budget that you put together. And then we have bonus points, and our bonus points are basically awarded on a couple things. Uh, one being if you're gonna have a business located in this distressed area from the downtown, uh, from 12th Street to 23rd Street, and then as you come up the 16th Street corridor, all the way down past the mall, including the mall, uh, you can uh get extra bonus points on your application for that. Uh, again, we're trying to encourage businesses to open up. Uh, um, you know, we have a lot of empty storefronts throughout that corridor. And then if you are opening and you're creating at least uh five slots, you get a certain amount of points. Anything more than six slots, you get another set of points. And the priority and score, the priorities in scoring, um, new childcare locations, increased educational programs, areas of high poverty, uh, we showed you the map on that, and then and increase the number of slots. Uh, for the scoring, you must score at least 70 points to be considered for this program. Um, if you score under 70, you're always welcome to reapply. Uh, the round of this uh application, it's gonna be open for six months. We're hoping to start it on February 1st, and the last application can come in July 31st. Um, so as we score applications, we're gonna meet once a month as a committee. And I probably should get to the slide on the committee. The committee is gonna be appointed by the mayor. It's gonna, it's being proposed to have three city employees. One of those employees would be an elected official, and then two people from the community. Uh, at this time, we are looking for someone from Q 2030 as well as from the Small Business Association to help us uh look at these uh applications. Uh, you can submit, again, you can submit your application starting February 1st. Uh, we don't, we accept any faxed applications, so you can either email them in to us, you can drop them off. Um, and then anything that we receive in February, we're gonna review in March, and then so on and so forth. And that's kind of it in a nutshell. So I guess I'll open it up for questions, if there's any.
Let's uh.
Motion to approve, Schmidt.
Second, Timian.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt. Second invite, Alderman Timian. Discussion, please. And could you stop sharing your screen? Thank you.
Sorry about that.
All right. Thank you. All right. Uh, yes, Mr. Schmidt?
I just, I think this is an excellent program. It is something that is a real struggle for a lot of families and is going to really push Moline to a place of really standing up to help our citizens. And I'm just really uh proud to be looking at something like this and and even to be taken out of the table.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien.
And I would say from an economic development uh point of view, I mean, we've heard a lot of complaining about people not returning to the workforce, and we know a big reason for that is childcare. It's expensive. It's not, uh, and we don't have enough of them. So, uh, good work on this, KJ. I appreciate the work you did on this. And I think this is, this is the way that the ARPA money has been intended for, to to get the economy going again.
Thank you, Mr. Timian.
I wanna uh echo this. Uh, I was a single parent for oh, eight years, and um the lack of childcare was a huge factor in in which jobs I took and and how far from home I could go. And it it was constantly juggling and and compromising my earning potential based. I I, my schedule was based more around childcare. And so I think that I I really applaud um the city and and KJ and all the work that's been put into this so far to help recognize that need uh for families uh in the city. to help recognize that need, uh, for families, uh, in the city and, and help, you know, resolve that problem. That's as Alderman O'Brien said, this is what the ARPA funds are for. So thank you.
Mr. Went, did you have your hand up as well?
I did. Thank you, Your Honor. Um, I, I'd like to echo, uh, the, the need, uh, for some of this in, in our community. I, I don't disagree with that. Um, but I, I have some real issues with, uh, this, uh, this particular document as written. Um, I, I went through and I, I, I sent to each one of you guys, uh, some notes on there, notes that I provided a few weeks ago, which resulted in a number of these changes and it getting, uh, pushed from the 11th to, to today, which I appreciate the changes that were made, uh, but there's still a number of, of issues outstanding on here. Um, I couldn't agree more. It was talked about that this will, uh, um, open up more slots. And I hope that's the case, but the way that this is drafted right now, that's not a requirement. You could, you can meet the 70-point threshold without, uh, increasing any additional slots. Uh, that there's nothing in here that, um, requires or helps a low, uh, or moderate income, uh, person that the, uh, uh, the slots that are open are affordable for them. Uh, there's, uh, this, this 10-day hold period for residents. Uh, I, I agree with Alderman Schmidt that this is something that for our residents, uh, this should be a benefit and should be what ARPA is paying for. Uh, it should be a benefit for our residents and for our businesses whose employees work here. But this just having a 10-day, and I think it's at the beginning that there's a period where, uh, any additional slots, if they're, uh, getting awarded this and they have additional slots, that they have to wait 10 days. Not that they actually have to put any Moline resident in there or any employee of a Moline, uh, business into it because they could have the price whatever they would like. Um, I, I'm not, in something like this, I'm not a real supply-side economics person and trickle-down. I would prefer us looking and helping our most vulnerable by providing them with, um, uh, a voucher or, or such in which we say, hey, here's 2,500 bucks, here's $5,000, but you've got to pay, you've got to use it in Moline. And if it get, the word gets out that we've got hundreds of, uh, of our residents that have vouchers for $5,000 that have to pay it in Moline, then the, the businesses are going to open up, but this doesn't do that. Um, uh, again, like I said, there, there's no requirement that additional, the way that the points are listed out, you can have an awesome budget, an office, office, some business plan and what you're currently doing. Get a good note, uh, from a community leader and get 30 points for that. You've hit your 70-point threshold. And the way that it's, it's written, in that month, if you're the top, uh, uh, point getter, um, the, it doesn't say they might be, uh, the funds may be given to you. It says they shall be given to you. And so.
Thank you. It, it, are you almost finished with that comment? So we have people involved that can respond.
Uh, a- absolutely. As long as we're not limited because I, I, there's a number of things that, that need to be addressed here. So yeah, absolutely.
Sure. Uh, I think that I, uh, I don't need to speak for the entire working group that weighed in on this. But, uh, there is the provision in this that if they don't meet the criteria, then they have to pay us back that money. So you could say it two different ways, but there is the criteria that they are trying to expand childcare. That's how you create, that's how you qualify.
No, where is that that you have to, where is that, that that's, uh, an eligibility requirement that you have to increase slots? I, I, it's nowhere in here.
I'm sorry, Mayor.
Go ahead.
There's an encouragement for, uh, business retention. If we can keep a business in business and have them have slots without that business shutting down, that's one aspect of this program too. Um, you know, we don't want to see any more businesses shut down that are, have available slots right now, Alderman Went. Uh, of course, we want to see new businesses open up and we want to see existing businesses, if possible, create additional slots. We're just trying to make sure that we have adequate childcare out there.
Um, Matt and Ms., uh, Mendenhall, could you speak to the, um, monies that are already available to help people pay for it? Uh, this is something that was discussed, uh, in the working group and, um, it's, that is a systemic issue that people at the state are, are addressing. And if we want to use our dollars, um, to not duplicate what others are doing, then this is the kind of program that we need to sponsor. Um, Ms. Mendenhall, could you speak to that?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, Marcy Mendenhall, CEO of SAL Family Community Services. Alderman Went, what you're talking about is something what Illinois is already doing. It's called a Childcare Assistance Program and it provides, um, a sliding scale fee for those families who earn at or below 185% of poverty. April Berhume from the Childcare Resource and Referral can speak to it longer, but this is really that, um, that those connections with people who are living and working in poverty to get them to be able to continue to work, continue to earn, um, overtime, continue to build themselves out of poverty, but with the assistance from the state. So at any point, at any time, you hear someone who says they cannot afford childcare, please connect them to our Moline-based childcare resource and referral, and then we'll be able to help them offset the cost of childcare if they fall into that category. I'll let April speak, but then I'd like to come back and talk about the holding of the, um, holding of seats or only a limiting of 10 days for, uh, Moline residents.
April, can you speak to that?
Yes, my name, my name is April Berhume. I'm the Director of Childcare Resource and Referral. We are located in Moline. Um, as Marcy had mentioned there, um, there are, um, there are state supports that are in place. Um, those parents are making 200% or less of federal poverty level. They qualify for our childcare assistance program. Traditionally qualification has been based on eligible work activities or, and are going to school. Uh, but actually this is a great program that really even couples with how the state of Illinois are, is using their, their relief dollars as Illinois has put in place, um, a new program through the end of June, that's the initial activity search. Um, so Illinois has utilizing their, um, relief dollars and how can they get those parents that are, that are searching for work or searching for eligible activities, um, where they are able to qualify for the childcare assistance program even during that search, which is a big movement for the state of Illinois. So as far as those dollars being in place, there are state funds that are, um, that have, that are, have been supporting as a 200% that are portable and less is not a new, um, it's, it's what we do. Um, so we have that in place, but also just, um, I'd like to speak in addition to those supports that are there for financial assistance for, uh, parents to, um, I hear, yes, we do have a need to expand spots, but even if we can retain spots. Um, we have seen just in the last six months alone, our data and our data is very conservative data at Childcare Resource and Referral. We have seen in home programs alone in the city of Moline, you have lost approximately 50 slots in home care. Um, that's, that's a big number of slots in a small geographic area. Um, we've even seen within the last week, um, this is data that has been, is new data that since what we've last provided to the city of Moline. Um, we have seen the one childcare center in Moline that provided, um, evening and weekend care, um, eliminated those shifts. So you, you lost a capacity of 72 slots just in the last week with evening and weekend care. So even, we, we really hope to build slots. We really do, but even retaining slots and helping these childcare providers to retain is huge as, as we see a, we continue to see a rapid decrease in slots.
Mr. O'Brien.
I guess I would have a question on the, the folks that would be, I guess, applying to get into a daycare. Is it very, um, I guess, something that, that people that will be doing that, are they aware of this? I mean, is your, your, I guess this is for April, is your feeling is that most of the people that apply for this are aware of the state, um, program? Are we going to make them aware?
Well, I, and I would, I would have a recommendation around, um, within this program, um, to encourage those providers that are receiving funding through this program. Um, a, um, whether it's a recommendation or requirement to, to partner with us. Not all program, not all providers are required to assist the childcare assistance program payments. So that I think that would be a great connection with looking at how you can utilize your resources of the city, um, and just state resources that are in your community.
And that is in the, that is in the, uh, proposed program that they connect with, uh, Childcare Resource and Referral and walk through that process. Mr. Meyer?
Thank you. Uh, April, just to follow up, you said up to 200% of the poverty level that they would qualify. Is that full qualification? Do they pay the full childcare cost or is it a portion or how affordable is the childcare at that point?
There is a sliding fee scale. There is a co-payment that is based off of a number of factors, um, income, number of children in the home. Um, just so we, so it's a sliding fee scale. So we have that 200% qualification. Um, but we can definitely could, could provide more information on what that looks like. So even if you're looking to offset, we do have parents that are close to that 200% poverty level. Um, that may have a high co-pay. So I think there is some, um, opportunity here around if you wanted to utilize dollars of a sort of a scholarship, um, methodology, um, around some of those co-pays, but just really wanting to address that, um, there are supports in place of taking a deeper dive into how those can be there or how those, how those partnerships can be made, um, and because we could provide more information on that sliding fee scale.
Um, and Ms. Mendenhall, you were going to address an item. You're muted, sorry.
Thanks. Uh, Alderman Went, you talked about, you know, making sure that we have these slots available for the, for, in childcare. So I'm thinking of our, um, family childcare homes. We want them to be successful. We want to make sure all the slots are filled very quickly so that they can stay in business. So we're thinking about the retention of these new entrepreneurs who are starting up. That's why we chose this 10-day period so that we could really promote this on social media, uh, on, on other medias as well to make sure that people know about it. And then, you know, Moline residents can have the quick snapshot to cut, to slide in there. Um, we also, if they would call the Childcare Resource, Resource and Referral, we would be able to tell them about these new slots available. Um, but I, I'm challenged as if we would keep the slots unpaid unless we're going to pay for those slots to stay open. That would certainly, uh, challenge, uh, a business.
All right, Mr. Went and then Mr. Messias.
Yeah, it, but, but my concern with that is this is a one-time, it from, from how it's written right here. It is a one-time, the moment that that slot comes open, you've got that 10-day window. And then after that, there, if, if we keep being told and, and I have no reason not to believe you that Moline ha, does not have enough slots, we have this gigantic demand. And so if that is the case, why would those spots be left open for expended, extended period of times? Or when a, when one of these places who got our ARPA money, money from the Moline residents, the city of Moline, um, when a new slot opens up, uh, why would they, there not be a preference for a Moline resident or an employee of a Moline business? Because like we said, there is tons of demand. Um, that is a benefit to our residents and to our businesses. The way that it's written right now, there is this blitz at the beginning, but, you know, they're using this money that, that, this goes on the way that it's written right now for possibly 36 months. It may only be 18, depending on when you actually open up and how long it takes you to expend the, the funds. And we'll talk about that in a, in a minute, but, um, that you're getting the use of this money and this program is supposed to be something that is a benefit for our residents long-term. Doing a 10, 10-day window and then forget about it. And now you can have a thing that's opened up and you've got Bettendorf, uh, parents, uh, who are working at, uh, Dear Corporate, uh, driving through Moline, dropping their kids off, getting the benefit. Pay, pay, maybe paying a higher price, taking a slot at a higher price where our residents who are in need can't get in. But the, the place has expanded because of their tax, uh, Moline residents' tax dollars. That's, those are the things that really concern me about the way that it, this is currently drafted. And so, uh, like I said, I'm open. If, if, if people can help me understand why our Moline residents' ARPA funds that could be used in a way that they only get that 10-day window. And then after that, good luck. I, 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 I really want to better understand this.
Uh, Mr. Messias, you had your hand up and then Mr. Schmidt.
I, I, I just wanted to say, I view this as a stimulus to an industry and a, a system here, not so much the, the most who can benefit from other state resources. Um, but it really doesn't.
Oh, you froze up on us, Mr. Messias. We're at.
Broadband.
We'll come to him, uh, when he can re-log on or, uh, call in. Mr. Schmidt?
I, I think there's a few things that relate directly to why.
Yeah, one sec. You can continue. I would get ready to call. Yes, I would get ready to call in. So you can stay part of the meeting. Yeah.
But. I, I'm all for it. Uh, it, it hits a lot of the boxes that are going to help not only individuals, but businesses and, and again, to get back to where we were before the pandemic as well.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt.
I think directly addressing on how we make this matter to our, our local people and why there's not necessarily going to be a big jump is because the people who have that need right now, many of them have it figured out. And there is an emotional attachment. You could not drag my kids away from their babysitter. And is that the person I'd have chosen if there'd been better options available in Moline? Uh, maybe, maybe not. I, I, we probably would have, we're very happy with our care, but I know there's lots of situations that, um, you know, that is a decision that once you are in that routine, it can be very difficult to address. And that is not something that can just instantly be dropped and to say that, you know, we're going to require that these businesses are only going to serve, um, certain people or allow certain people to come through. That is, uh, basically saying we want to hobble these businesses. But if we want to set them up and have them be successful, then we need to give them the freedom to do that. And giving preference to Moline and pushing that forward, I think is appropriate. But I think hobbling them and giving them, you know, saying you're not allowed to be on a fair, uh, playing field with neighboring, uh, centers. When this is an entrepreneur-based, building-up-business-based program is just very short-sighted.
Your Honor, this is Alderman Waldron.
Uh, yes, Mr. Waldron.
Probably time I weighed in, so. As you, as you know, last fall, I didn't support this program. No surprise, I still don't. Uh, clearly I don't believe like some of the others do that this is appropriate use of ARPA funds. I think the private sector takes care of the needs that, uh, come up from business. And I think I talked to one of the committee members today about is this program replicated anywhere in Illinois? And this program is not replicated anywhere in Illinois. And in fact, the committee member I talked to said they found one in Oregon. And that was the closest, uh, that they could find one of these programs. Uh, if this was such a good program, I would think Rock Island, East Moline, the county would jump in with us. Sometimes you invent the wheel, sometimes you reinvent the wheel. I don't think we need to do that here. I think these ARPA funds are better spent on infrastructure, specifically lead pipes for the water, which we are, know are hundreds of millions of dollars coming down the road. And I think our money is better spent there than a program that we're going to sit here and talk about and argue about the fundamentals and the nuances of it rather than replace those lead lines, which is actual benefit to our residents. Rather, this is a sketchy at best, as Alderman Went says, at best for our residents and at worst for the entire Quad Cities and the rest of the Quad Cities has no stake in it. So I cannot support this program. Thank you, Your Honor.
Uh, yeah, Mr. Went and then Mr. Timian.
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. I, 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 I want to, uh, address what Alderman Schmidt had said. And then, uh, I think I'm going to start, uh, working on some of the amendments to this, but wh- what was described there is what you call a straw man argument. We are not hobbling these businesses. If they want to take our funds and take our money, we can put requirements on it. If they don't want to take our money, they can, uh, do their business any way they can. So to say that they're hobbling them is crazy. Um, but what we can do is provide, uh, uh, requirements if we're giving tax out up to $50,000 for some of these. Uh, again, five times as much as what we gave to a lot of businesses that were just struggling to even survive and keep their doors open through COVID. If we're giving up to $50,000 to them, we certainly can say the benefit of what you're doing, some of those slots have to go to Moline residents or to the employees of Moline businesses. That is, there's no problem with that at all. And, and to say that it's hobbling. And to say that it's hobbling, they don't have to take the money. They can run their business exactly how they want. But if they want our taxpayers' money, they have to abide by some of our rules. I guess, let me start with this. I'm going to make a motion to amend. Within here, there was a red line change that says that they have to stay in business and stay up on this for 36 months. It used to say, I think, 15. It went to 36. But the difference was, it used to be 15 from final payment. Now it is 36 months from initial payment. Well, they've got 15 months to spend the money if they're opening up new. And so this 36 months really isn't necessarily being in business for 36 months. So I would like to say, to change that, that they have to make the amendment that it is for 60 months after their final dispersment.
Second.
Discussion, motion by Alderman Went, seconded by Alderman Waldron, discussion. Mr. Went.
Thank you, Your Honor. I think that this is important. If we are going to be providing tens of thousands, $50,000 to some of these places, making it a requirement that they put a business plan together in which they're not just holding on by their fingernails to get to 18 months after they actually open up, because that could be 36 months from their first payment. But actually, they put together a business plan in which they're going to stay open for five years is not, I don't think is outside of the realm. I would be open to if somebody wanted to say, you know, it's, you know, 1/60th is forgiven each month and it reduces down. But I'm going to start with that they have to be in business for that 60 months rather than, 60 months from the last dispersment rather than 36 months from the first dispersment.
So I'm going to ask April to weigh in on what is the average, April or Marcy Mendenhall, please. What's the average time a childcare business stays in business? And you have to maybe distinguish that in-home versus a center.
I would say it's something that I would want to collect more data on to give a definitive response. But when I look just narratively, when I look at our population of our providers, these are providers that, a licensed provider, licensing is a rigorous process that a provider is going through. So when our providers are licensed, we are seeing that stability of care that they are staying. Again, I would, I'm a data person, so I would want more data to be able to say, yeah, definitively, I can tell you it's five years. But from what I have seen, being in this particular position for six years, being in childcare in Rock Island County for about 14 years, we do see those providers that do have longevity when they are licensed. And actually, I think it's really stabilizing the field when you have that licensing. Because we also have licensing exempt providers, and those are where we see turnover. Those are where we see lack of support. We see lack of payments. When a provider is licensed in the childcare assistance program, their rate of reimbursement from the state is much higher. So when you support them with licensing, you are supporting them to have a much stronger business and a much stronger cash flow that's coming in. Because there's licensing just has more support around it.
Thank you. Ms. Mendenhall, did you want to add anything?
I don't have any additional data to that. I would just say, anecdotally, centers, brick and mortar, are more likely to stay in business. The home providers are maybe more dynamic. Having that 60 months attached to a home provider who is only getting up to $10,000, I think that's a bit rigorous. I wonder if there could be some consideration for reducing that in comparison with how many dollars are being distributed.
Thank you. Mr. Timian, you had your hand up.
Not in the middle of this motion, Your Honor.
Oh, okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call, please, on extending the time period before repayment, or sorry. Let me restate that, Mr. Went. Extending the period of effectiveness to 60 months from the end of dispersment rather than 36 months from the beginning. Roll call, please.
Alderman Waldron?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Nay.
Williams? Alderman Williams?
Aye.
Alderman Macias?
Nay.
Alderman Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Nay.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Four ayes, four nays. Your Honor, would you like to vote?
Nay.
And that motion fails.
Okay. Mr. Timian, you had your hand raised.
Thank you, Your Honor. Alderman Waldron made a, you know, we're going to disagree on the merits of this and a lot of the specifics. But I agree with him that there are a lot better ways for us to be spending our time than arguing over specifics and details of something that we've had the information of for six weeks. And I think that we all know where we stand on it. So I'd like to make a motion to call the question.
Second.
Who was that by? Alderman O'Brien. So motion by Alderman Timian, seconded by Alderman O'Brien. Roll call, please, on calling the question.
Alderman Waldron?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Nay.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Nay.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Five ayes, I'm sorry, six ayes, two nays. And that motion passes.
All right.
Corey, Your Honor?
Yes.
Just for clarification, within this document, it seems that the plan is to disperse all $500,000 as applications come in. But I thought that what we had voted for on the ARPA was $250,000 budgeted in 2022 and then 250 in 2023. Is that still the case? So this is only for 250,000 of it, or is this for the full 500?
Well, this is up to 500, but the period of application is rolling until, was it October 31st, KJ?
July 31st.
July 31st. So it's a good point you're making. The thought is that we know that budgetarily, like it's 250, plus another 250 a year from now. So I think what the point of that rolling period is to find out what the interest is, how many people apply. And certainly, we can, the KJ could come back to counsel if we got applications for more than 250 in this first, this application period. Does that sound correct, Ms. Whitley?
Yes, and I can certainly check with Carol Barnes. I don't know if she's on the phone or not, whether it was 500 in the first year or if it was a 250 or a 250.
No, it's 250 one year and 250 another year.
Then for sure, yes, we can certainly do that.
So will that reflect in the policy that there would be only 250 dispersed this year? And then 250 the following year?
That is, we have to follow what's in the budget. So if, for some reason, we get more interest in the first group here, I think we could come back, or staff could come back to council and talk about that as we do with some other things. So the question has been called. And the motion for adopting this program is on the floor. Any further discuss, wait, the question has been called. So roll call, please.
So roll call on the amended motion. Alderman Waldron?
Non-amended.
Sorry, not amended because that failed. Sorry about that. So the original motion. Alderman Waldron?
Nay.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Nay.
Alderman Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Nay as written.
Alderman Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Nay.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Four ayes, four nays. Your Honor, would you like to vote?
Yes, aye.
And that motion passes.
Okay. Thank you for joining us, those of you that were on this call. We will move to item number, I think it's number five now, 2021 sidewalk change order number one and final. Mr. Schenk?
Yes, good evening, Mayor. Here tonight to present to you all the 2021 sidewalk improvement program, which included ADA ramp improvements, tripping hazard improvements, as well as the infill sidewalk program. And I'm going to try to share my screen. And let's see. Can you all see that?
No, sir.
Not yet.
All right. Can you see that?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. I can't tell what you're seeing, but. Okay. We're going to go to the next slide. For the completed sidewalks, projects, the summary is that 1,360 lineal feet of new sidewalk infill projects occurred. They were on three streets, 19th Street, River Drive, and 34th Street. The staff's estimated cost of that project was $160,000 total for those sidewalks. The actual construction cost was $166,729.54. We also had 1,577 lineal feet of sidewalks that were removed and replaced due to tripping hazards. And we also had some ADA sidewalk ramps and detectable warning strips replaced at four different locations. That cost was $127,065.95. The total project cost for the, that came in was $293,795.49. I'm going to show some locations real quick. There. This is the 19th Street infill. That's 600 feet of five-inch sidewalk. We thickened up the sidewalk from four inches to five inches. We went with an eight-foot wide concrete walkway, put in some ADA ramps, and also did some driveway replacements where we put the sidewalk. On River Drive, we put in 435 lineal feet of four-inch-thick sidewalk, five feet wide. And we also installed an ADA ramp there at University Drive. And the last infill project was 34th Street. That was 325 feet of four-inch-thick sidewalk, four inch wide. That was the existing sidewalk that we tied into was four feet. So therefore, we made this piece of sidewalk as well. We installed an ADA ramp. We did some driveway replacements. And we also had to put a retaining wall in due to the slope that was existing from the sidewalk up to the yard. The change order, now this is the final change order. The original construction contract amount was $254,975. The changes that were made during construction, three changes were made on 19th Street. That is that we thickened up the sidewalk from four inches to five inches. The reason for that is that we wanted to be able to put a vehicle on that walkway to do some snow removal. And that way, we had a thick enough sidewalk that it wouldn't be damaged during that process. We also had to include some additional site grading due to the fact that we did raise the sidewalk some with that thickened sidewalk, as well as we did some removal of some pavement and then patched it to ensure that the drainage was accurate and it would flow away from the ADA ramp. On 34th Street, we did four things. We had to add some steps through the retaining wall. Initially, as it existed before the construction, the two homes from 24th Street going north did not have a sidewalk leading out to the 34th Street. The homeowners asked that if we're going to put up a retaining wall, they'd like to be able to walk out to 34th Street. And the only way to do that would be to have a walkway through the retaining wall. And that was added for those residents. There was a sewer line that needed adjustment. It was very close to the top of the side or the bottom of the sidewalk. So we had to do some readjustment on the sanitary service line. And then we had an additional tree that was not set to be removed, but due to the trimming and the removal of the root system, we had to take that tree out. And then, again, we had some pavement removal and replacement there on 34th Street where we put the ADA ramp. That total change order, the final change order, was $38,820.49. That came up to the total project cost, which I had previously presented, was $293,795.49. And just to give an overview map, this is a map that shows, the red lines are the sidewalk infill locations. And the blue dots are those where we replaced the sidewalk due to tripping hazards or we replaced the existing ADA ramps and replaced those with new ramps. And now I'll open it up to any questions that the council may have.
Yes, Mr. Went?
Well, Michael, thank you very much. I want to say how much I appreciate Laura and Joe and Daryl and the Complete Streets Group that worked on some of these things. These are great additions. And thank you for putting this presentation together. I think it's important for the whole council to see what was going on and all the improvements that were happening throughout the city. So thank you very much. And with that, I'll move to approve the change order.
Is there a second?
I'll second, Moyer.
Thank you. Motion by Alderman Went, seconded by Alderman Moyer. Discussion. Mr. Schmidt?
Pardon me. I just had one question from the previous slide. Because I was having trouble understanding why the total additional costs were barely higher than that first line at 36,000. I don't know if that was just a typo or something else was going on.
That may be a typo. I apologize. Yes, you are correct. That may be a typo.
As long as that looks like what that is, I'm okay with that.
Thank you for catching that. I didn't catch that. Some of the others did this.
Easy enough. Thank you.
Anything further? From the council? I'm not seeing anything. Okay, roll call, please.
Alderman Waldron?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
All right, that motion passes. Thank you. Now, Sarah Mark is up for the next few items. Fire engine change orders is the first one.
And I've got a.
Could you take your screen down, screen sharing?
Yes, thank you.
I'm working on that. I'm trying to get down to where I need to be. Stop sharing. There it is. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Vitas or Ms. Mark? Bob?
This is interim director of Public Works, Brad Fink. I can take this one.
This is interim director of Public Works, uh, Brad Fink. I can take this one.
Oh, okay, thank you, Mr. Vitas.
Um, as you're aware, uh, the fire department was approved to purchase new, two new, uh, fire engines. Uh, dur- during the, uh, assembly of these, the fire department had identified a number of, uh, changes that they wanted to incorporate into the new, uh, fire engines. Uh, Chief Schneider worked with, uh, Sarah Mark, Fleet and Facilities Manager, to, to come up with this change, change order. Uh, the list of changes, I think, were included in the agenda supplement. Um, so staff is supporting these and, and are requesting authorization to, uh, approve these changes outlined in the change order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Moyer. And Mr. What? Was that the second? Thank you. Uh, discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Alderman Waldron?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Macias?
He's having some difficulties. Alderman Macias, are you with us?
Wonder who is I.
We'll come back to him. Alderman Went?
Aye.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, Macias is now calling user eight.
Okay.
Alderman Macias, would you like to vote on item number six?
Aye.
Thank you. Alderman Moyer?
Aye.
Alderman O'Brien?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
Alright, that motion passes. Number seven, flood pump repair. Mr. Fink, is that you as well?
Yes, Your Honor, I can take this as well. Thank you. Um, so a number of years ago, we had a failure of this pump, uh, during the operation of a flooding event, and, uh, we had to replace the engine. Uh, back in twenty-twenty, I think that was. Um, at that time, when the engine was replaced, we discovered the, some scoring on the pump itself that needed to re- be replaced as well. This is a critical piece of infrastructure that we use during, uh, flooding events down by the river. Uh, very, uh, large pump. It fits, it's actually on the back of, uh, one of our, um, plow trucks. And, um, the cost to, uh, replace or repair the actual pump section is nineteen thousand, eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars. So, we are seeking your approval tonight to, uh, go ahead and make that repair and get this pump back, uh, in order.
Second.
Motion by Alderman O'Brien, seconded by Alderman Went. Discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Alderman Waldron?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Timian? Oh, I'm sorry. Alderman Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
That motion passes. Number eight, police canine unit. Mr. Fink?
Sure, I can take this one as well. Thank you, Your Honor. Um, so working with the chief, uh, the, and I, I think the chief can expound a little bit on, um, the, the, getting the additional canine unit, uh, itself. Um, but we were work, worked with the chief to come up with this unit, um, twenty-twenty-two Ford Police Interceptor. Uh, we did look at, um, uh, sourcing this locally. They were able to pro- provide a competitive price, so we're seeking to purchase this, uh, vehicle from, uh, Sexton, uh, for the amount of thirty-nine thousand, four hundred and seventy-six dollars.
Thank you.
Motion to approve. Moyer?
Second.
O'Brien?
Alderman Moyer, seconded by Alderman Williams. Um... All, oh, sorry. Discussion?
Your Honor, Alderman Waldron?
Yes, Mr. Waldron.
Uh, was this budgeted for, or is this an extra that we, uh, did not talk about and I just missed, missed it in the budget? It's probably a question for the chief.
Yeah, Alderman Waldron, this is not budgeted, but the violators of the state drug laws are gonna pay for this. Uh, we have, uh, asset forfeiture that is, uh, uh, allowed to be seized and used for the enforcement of drug laws in the state of Illinois, and, uh, the money for both this item and the next item will be taken out of that fund, uh, which is awarded to us through the court system on, uh, those, those, uh, forfeited funds. Uh, the current canine unit, uh, the canine, the dog itself, uh, was donated to us and went into service in two thousand and seventeen. Uh, I estimate it probably has about two years left, so, uh, the plan would have, is to build a succession plan and get this vehicle and a new dog up and running over the next year, and then slowly transition the next one out. So we would have two dogs, and then they would, they would be overlapping and staggered as one retires, and we have another one coming into the fleet.
Your Honor, I have a follow-up for the chief?
Yes, sir.
Chief, is, is there a possibility of utilizing the one vehicle you have for both dogs? I mean, are they on the same shift? And my second question, was there a, a chance to repurpose one of the, uh, cruisers that we've just gotten rid of in the last year?
Well, for your first question, uh, typically, no. The dog lives at home with the handler, and, uh, the, the handler takes that vehicle and the dog home each night. Uh, that dog lives with them in a provided kennel, uh, and then they go in service. They would, we would obviously need two sets of gear, uh, and it, and to transport two dogs. Uh, the second question that you had about, was there a chance to repurpose? Uh, I don't know that answer specifically. However, we, we, we have a canine unit that is in service, and it is a vehicle that is set to be retired, uh, in the next set of replacements. I, it's either next year or the year after. I don't know that exact date. Uh, but to my knowledge, those, those vehicles have been decommissioned. I, I think that they're at least, uh, not in service or been sold. I'm not sure. But my understanding is that, uh, reached end of life, but I'd have to defer to Sarah or Brad.
Thank you, Chief.
I'd be happy to help with that if you guys have any further questions. Um, typically, a squad car or, um, a beat vehicle, something that's gonna be utilized the way that the police department uses their vehicles. Um, we're gonna be looking at anywhere from five to seven years. Existing car is a two thousand and thirteen. Um, so we're gonna be pushing it a little bit because it is a dedicated unit that's going to be assigned to one officer a little bit longer than a traditional squad car. Um, so my recommendation would not be to use one of the existing squads just because they are, they are already sort of at the end of their life as a police unit. They're, they're gonna be more, um, useful as more of an administrative vehicle.
Thank you. Any further questions? Alright, hearing none. Roll call, please.
Alderman Waldron?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Mr. Timian? Mr. Tim-
Aye.
Thank you.
Alderman Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
Okay, and, uh, number nine, we're move, that motion passes. Uh, moving on to number nine, police canine outfit. Mr. Fink or Sarah?
Thank you. Um, this is related to the last item that was just approved. Um, basically, we're seeking approval to, uh, sole source, sole source purchase the equipment to outfit that squad that was just purchased for the canine unit. So obviously, there's specialty equipment that is involved with the canine unit. Um, so we're seeking council's approval, uh, to, uh, sole source, uh, the upfitting of, of the equipment.
Motion to approve, Williams.
A second.
Thank you. Motion by Alderman Williams, seconded by Alderman Went. Discussion? Alright, hearing none. Roll call, please.
Alderman Waldron?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
Alright, that motion passes.
Thank you.
Yep, moving to number eleven, amending chapter twenty-seven, purchasing of the Moline Code of Ordinances. Margaret Kasopolis.
Thank you, Mayor. So, um, at our last discussion on this, uh, there were several motions made directing us to make various, uh, changes to the ordinance revisions, um, with the caveat that they would be discussed further. So, um, in an effort to, as we have done before, take smaller bites out of this, we, um, started with, uh, the local, uh, graduates, and at Alderman Went's suggestion, we changed that to local graduates and residents, um, and are looking for additional direction from you on that.
Uh, Your Honor, Alderman Timian?
Uh, yes, there's no motion on the floor yet. So, uh, alright, we're not to a discussion point, Your Honor. Do you have a question from Ms. Kasopolis?
Um, I, I was, I was prepared to make a motion, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Mr. Timian?
I, I, uh, you know, I, I've heard a lot of feedback from the, the city, uh, uh, both, uh, building trades and, uh, residents, uh, some positive, some negative. And it's just taken me to the conclusion that, um, with everything that we have planned for CIP and everything else going on with our aggressive agenda for the year, now is not the right time to be doing this. So I would like to make a motion to table, uh, all of these changes for, uh, chapter twenty-seven indefinitely.
Second. Wrongly second.
There's a second from, the first person, was that O'Brien?
That was me, yeah.
Okay. Motion by Alderman Timian, seconded by Alderman O'Brien. Uh, discussion?
Your Honor, I have a question. I'm sorry, I don't think we ever had a motion to remove it from the table.
At some point, clerk.
Alright.
Yes.
Uh, we will suspend that, the motion that's on the table in order. Is that even an option for me? I've got my handy-dandy cheat sheet here.
I think we can go back and have a motion to remove from the table.
Can, can't you modify the tabling from a definite to indefinite?
Yes.
Wow.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that's what he did.
Sure.
Or, or you could modify your motion to remove it from the table.
Yeah.
Table it indefinite.
Yes, that, that's what I'm looking at here as, uh, modify a motion.
You, you... Your Honor?
Yes, Mr. Went?
Yeah, I, I mean, Robert's rule, i- i- to take it off the table, then to have that vote, and then to vote again to put it back on the table, you just modify the tabling from a, uh, uh, definite, which was to today, to an indefinite, which is what the motion was. And so you don't have to take it off to the table to modify what the, the category of tabling was.
Right.
Just asking, I, 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 I think that'll be a much easier-
This council is fine with that. Uh, you know, if that's the will of the council, I certainly can proceed along those lines.
Uh, Your Honor, that was my intention all along.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alright, then we shall proceed with the vote. Roll call, please.
Alderman Waldron?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
Alright, that motion passes. Uh, number twelve, amending chapter four, alcoholic liquor of the Moline Code of, Code of Ordinances.
So again, this was a matter that was tabled on the eleventh until tonight. Um, and as you may recall, we, you as council, uh, did approve part of the original revisions, which incorporated, um, the new state law. And what remains is the issue related to, uh, class C, double C, and triple C, uh, being prohibited from, uh, having a class B or A license of budding, um, the, uh, establishment with the C, double C, or triple C. Uh, we bring this back again for further discussion on, uh, as to your pleasure in how we proceed. Uh, one option is to hold this until we do our very, uh, general, uh, review of chapter four coming up, I believe, in February.
Mr. Went?
Are, are you looking for, uh, us to make a motion to take it off the table?
That would be, yeah, let's do it that way this time.
Or you could just modify, um, like you did the last one for one vote.
I, I'll, but I, I think we, we wanna talk about the, I'm gonna, uh, make a motion to take it off the table.
Second, Schmidt.
Alright, motion Alderman Went, seconded by Alderman Schmidt. Uh, yes, Mr. Went?
Um, so what, what I'd like to do is to, uh, make a motion to strike in its entirety all changes regarding the, um, uh, the license B next to license C, um, and then I'll, there's another motion after that, but I, I'll make that motion begin with.
I'll second.
Is there a second? Alright, uh, Mr. Motion Alderman Went, seconded by Alderman Moyer. Discussion? Yes, Mr. Went?
Uh, so, uh, the reason I wanted to strike this is because I am vehemently opposed to this, uh, change to the ordinance. Um, the, the way it's set up, so for instance, uh, we have a situation in which down at the waterfront, uh, um, apartments down by the, uh, by Western, uh, we have a developer that would like to put in a high-end convenience store, um, as well as a, um, uh, a, a bar in, in that, uh, establishment. And if we pass this, neither one of those would, uh, they wouldn't be able to do that because they would be adjacent to each other in the same building. And so, again, I think that the, the reasoning, I understand why staff came up with this, this reasoning. I, I, I think that enforcement of our other portions of the code is a better way to, uh, uh, to address some of the other issues we have at, uh, double, different establishments in, in town. Um, but, uh, I would highly, uh, support, uh, just striking this and, and getting away with this not, uh, nonsense. But what I'd like to do is an amendment to, uh, this amendment is to, um, reduce or to eliminate the caps on, um, C and CC and C, CC and CCC licenses, uh, in the city, and replace it with a requirement that when someone, uh, makes, uh, application or inquiry, that, uh, while the number is, uh, or the, the, the limit is, uh, eliminated, that, that just comes to council for our consideration. So, in situations where you've got a developer, Bennys comes to town and says, hey, I want to, uh, do a, uh, a class C, the answer to them is not, no, we've already reached our cap. The answer is, okay, our process is, this goes to council. And then council will determine if we increase, or if we allow for another C, CC, or CCC license.
Okay, uh, that, there's an amendment to the amendment on the floor. Is there a second to that? I don't. Thank you. That's been seconded by Alderman Moyer. Is there discussion on that? Mr. O'Brien?
I have a question with, in regards to this entity that's gonna go and open up a liquor store and a bar next to it. Is our code gonna be that rock solid that he can't come to us for a variance, to grant him the variance to do that? Or for that matter, with Bennys, if they come to town? I mean, if they come to town, we're certainly gonna listen to what they have to say. I mean.
Mr. O'Brien, the current, currently there is the cap on CCs. Am I saying that right, Clerk? But they can, anyone can come and ask to lift that cap. That's what we did with Watermark Corners. So we already have that process in place.
So how about we cross that bridge when we come to it? I don't know why.
Well, I will point out then, you know, if this council wants all of that work to come to the council, then you don't need a liquor commissioner in the way it's constituted right now. If that, if that's the process you wanted. Mr. Went?
And I understand Alderman O'Brien, what you're saying, but the reality is if you're a developer or you're coming into a community, you know, you have people who do liquor. They look at the ordinance and say, they're limited out. Let's look for a different location. Or if they talk with staff and their first reaction is, we've got a cap and we can't have any more, they will then look for a location that they don't have to jump through all of these hoops and everything. But if the process, and then hope that we're going to go against what our current ordinances. We've already had a situation in which there has been people who wanted to open up things and they came and talked to staff, and rightfully so, staff said, we're at our limit. And then that was the end of it and we never heard about it. This is a way, if we make this change, that when somebody wants to come in and invest in our community and to put something in, that we do hear about it and we can make the decision. We can make the hard, if it's something we don't want, if it's a liquor store that we think is, is not appropriate or whatever the situation is, it comes to council, we can make that decision. But if they, if it's something that we do want, then that's the process and then we do allow it. And so I think.
I have a quick question for you, Mr. Went. Would you say that this process for this classification could mirror what you've already passed? The council has already passed with B licenses, I believe. Didn't we?
So what we added for, that was for B licenses as it pertained to to gaming. And quite honestly, I think it should just come, in that particular instances, we kind of went through this thing where you had the ultimate just veto and then we changed that to if you don't like it, then five of us have to vote for it rather than just four and you or whatever. And so I would prefer to, again, avoid that nonsense, that just have it come and we'll hear about it when they make application. And if a majority of us want it, then it'll move forward.
Mr. O'Brien and then Mr. Schmidt.
I just have a question. When's the last time somebody asked for one of these licenses? How long ago was it? And how, when's the last time we denied one?
It was just this last summer.
We denied one?
The cap, the cap, you guys voted on caps this last summer and that's, and they didn't choose. And that's.
Did anybody come to us and say, hey, I want this? And we said, no.
The, Your Honor?
Yes, Mr. Went.
Yeah, the developer finally did, like, two weeks ago came to me and said, hey, I was told I can't do this. And I said, no, that's, while we do have a cap, there is a process. And he's like, well, what process is that? And I don't think he understood. I'm sure it was probably communicated to him. But the way that the ordinance is written, we've got a hard cap. It's not then an application and it goes to council. That's what I want to change is if somebody comes in and wants this, they don't get it by right. If it's a new one, that they have to, basically, then what staff would tell them is the process for a new one would be you come to council. And so we did have somebody who did come in and they, they thought that there was just no choice until I had coffee with them and told them we need to change that.
Was this your guy on River Drive? Is that the guy you were talking about?
Yes.
I just, Mayor, if I could just clarify that that item, that surrounding property owner consent did return to council when he applied for the Class B tavern. And there was an explanation at that time that he was switching from a Class CC to a Class B, which would allow him to have gaming, which is something that he very much wanted.
Ms. Kasopolis, you had your hand up and then Mr. Schmidt.
Yes, and Alderman, what you are suggesting tonight is part of our overall evaluation and review of chapter four. So we did plan on addressing that when we brought, when we bring chapter four revisions before you.
Thank you. Mr. Schmidt, you had your hand raised.
So, pardon me, I just want to make sure that I'm understanding where we're at first and then I have a question. Because we had already passed the majority of what was in the proposed language, everything except the language related to being abutted. And we are now discussing an amendment to remove all that language and add, then add this item about removing the caps for C. And I saw, thank you, Alderman, your confirmation that. So I, I I agree I agree with what we're trying to accomplish here. And I think that it is something with some merit. My biggest question is, as we look at raising those cap numbers, if we as a council have to individually decide whether to increase or decrease those cap numbers based on requests that are coming in, what kind of liability are we opening ourselves to with that decision?
Ms. Kasopolis?
So you have immunity from with relation to actions as Alderman. So you.
I also meant the city.
Right, now if the city were to engage in some course of conduct that targets or treats certain individuals or applicants in a disparate manner, then of course there could be a claim. But as we've talked about before, a license is a privilege, not a right. So there is a very high bar that they were, that any claimant would have to reach and surpass in order to make that claim. So for instance, it would be completely lawful when reviewing an application. And by the way, we did just put caps in and there is already the ability for applicants to come before the board of council and, and seek a license. But as I was saying, there, if you as a council decided that you do not like their business model or you thought there were too many liquor stores or convenience stores with liquor licenses in the area or on the block, those are lawful reasons. Those would not create liability.
Thank you, Ms. Kasopolis. Mr. Timian and then Mr. Macias. I do want to say, like, appreciate the amendment being offered and the amendment to the amendment. As Ms. Kasopolis said, and as you have noted, Mr. Went, I think in the last discussion about this, we have tools in place to do the enforcement piece. So we either can spend more time talking about this or make a decision or put it all together in February when we're talking about chapter four updates. But I'll let Mr. Timian continue.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm a, so, understanding that we're two layers deep, we have the amendment to the amendment. The original amendment, which was to remove language of the abutting B and C. In looking at the attachment, there is no such language. There's only language about abutting B and Double Cs. So I'm unsure if it's even a relevant amendment, considering it is not in addition to the ordinance.
Thank you. I think you are correct, Mr. Timian. It is only related, oh, no, 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 Margaret. Can you, we went, talked about this. Could you please clarify? I don't have it right in front of me at the moment. I think you're on mute.
I'm looking at 182 of the, the, the document tonight, page 182.
I think Alderman Timian is correct.
You are correct. I think I misspoke when, on the original one, it was to remove everything with CC and B, but my amendment to the amendment includes all those C classifications.
Okay.
Sorry, sorry if I misspoke.
Thank you. Mr. Macias.
Yeah, to the point of the caps, I certainly wouldn't want to discourage any developers or anybody wanting to come here. But as far as like, having every single new developer or business come to the council, I see that as two things, the caps and then also having the liquor commissioner, mayor, run through that process. So do we want to have a discussion separately of removing the caps or not even calling it caps? As opposed to separately from, do they have to come to council? I honestly don't want to be, I think it works going through the liquor commissioner. But, but yeah, the caps, is that a separate thing? Maybe you can clarify, Mike?
Mr. Went?
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, the way it is right now, it doesn't go with the liquor commissioner because there's a cap. It's just, there's not an option. This then would allow for, if we remove the caps, the process for which it then comes through council. I mean, I didn't draft the language, staff would draft the language, it'll come back. And if we want to tweak out what that process is. But, but my concern with having the caps is it's, it's hard. The thing is, no. Now, we all, anybody who works with cities a lot knows that there's always a variance or some way to go out and appeal. But not everybody is that savvy or not everybody. If you've got a couple of locations you're looking at, different communities, if I've got one that they've already said, this is it. And another one where it says, oh, yeah, come in, we're developer friendly. You're gonna probably go to the, all things being equal, to the path of least resistance. And I think what this is, is a compromise of that and just say, hey, this is our process, you come in. And I don't think the concern that we're gonna all of a sudden be inundated with all of these. If all of a sudden we have so much development, that we've got so many new bars and restaurants and convenience stores and those sorts of things, we could revisit at that point. Just knowing how many actual new ones, I mean, this wouldn't be a process for all the existing renewals and those sorts of things. That would absolutely go through the liquor commissioner and the, as the mayor. But this would just be for new ones coming in.
Any, yes, Ms. Kasopolis and Mr. Moyer?
Right, so Alderman Went, I tried to write down what your motion was. Is it to eliminate the, I, I believe, reduce and eliminate.
So it would, it would eliminate the cap. But the, the process would be when a new application came in for a new location establishment, that it would come to the council for our approval.
So if I understand you correctly, the process would change from the current application process with the liquor commissioner and through the clerk. And then council would review all of the documentation and information for, on every application, regardless of how many licenses are issued for C, Double C, Triple.
For only new, it's not renewals. Because currently, it doesn't go through that process. There's a hard cap. So if somebody came in, they, there's not an application, they would be told there, we, there's not an application for you even to submit because we've capped out. So that's what they're being told and that's what they should be being told because we have a hard cap. If we remove the cap, then any new ones would make application. And then that would be voted upon by the council. And, and I trust that you'll put the right language together, similar to like what the mayor said that we were doing with.
The B gambling.
Gambling, but it would come to council.
Mr. Moyer, you had a comment or question?
Thank you. I was just gonna say, I'm just opposed to the idea of the cap because we are talking about development. We're developing down by Western, we're developing potentially along John Deere Road, we're developing potentially south of the airport. I just don't think it really is sensible to have these caps in place. And I'm much more interested in free market approach to, you know, a competitive approach. I, if we remove the caps, then I wouldn't see necessarily the need to come to council for approval because without the cap, then we wouldn't have these denials. So that's just where I stand.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Timian and then Ms. Kasopolis.
I think there are a lot of ways to look at this. I agree with both sides, but ultimately there needs to be some sort of mechanism for control. And as elected officials for the city, we do represent the constituents and what the best interest of the city. And currently, that mechanism is caps. Alternatively, it would be individual approval by the council. I think they're both valid ways to do it. But to open it up without some sort of approval process, I fear removes that last check that we need to ensure, you know, as Margaret mentioned, if we feel there are too many on this street, if we feel we already have enough wholesale liquor stores in this one square section of the city, we have the ability to stop that. And by removing all checks and balances completely, we open up the floodgates and that just kind of erodes the city. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, hearing no other comments, are we ready to vote on the amendment to the amendment? Which is to include a process to bring new C, Double C, or Triple C applications for those licenses to the council. Correct?
I can read what I have.
And remove the cap.
And remove the caps.
Right.
Okay, so roll call, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Walden?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Nay.
Macias?
Nay.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Nay.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Nay.
Three ayes, five nays. That motion fails.
Okay, so the motion on the table then is striking all of the language related to the abutting.
Correct.
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 Any comments or questions there? Mr. Schmidt.
So I share Alderman Went's concerns with the actual language that is that was in place here. I think that that it didn't get the to where we were trying to go. And I guess my question is, is there an intention to revisiting or trying to address that issue in the future? Or I don't know what conversations has happened from from our meeting two weeks ago to what where we are at now, as far as if there's a better language alternative or a better tool for doing that same thing, or if we want to rely on the policies it is now.
I believe Ms. Kostopoulos and Madam Clerk, if you can correct me. But the intent is anything else related to Chapter Four can come back and be talked about when we're doing that comprehensive code update for that chapter. So the intent would be if you want to talk about that, we could talk about that. But as I've mentioned, I understand and appreciate Mr. Went's pointing out on the 11th that we have a process in place for enforcement. And this doesn't necessarily address that. It has more tentacles to it than we need. So I mean, I would entertain a motion to to table it indefinitely or just strike all the language now, which is the motion on the table, with knowing that any Chapter Four updates, we really need to preserve our time, seeing as it's 8:32, and address those as they work in the schedule for comprehensive code updates. So.
Which is scheduled for February 15.
Yep. So hearing no more questions or comments, all in favor of striking all the language related to abutting. So this.
Roll call.
It'll be roll call, please. Yep.
Alderman Waldron.
Nay.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Alderman Williams.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Seven ayes, one nay. That motion passes.
Thank you very much. Mr. Went.
Got a quick question for Janine. Currently with this cap, because that failed, that the cap's still in place. If Bennies came and said, hey, I want, we want to come in at the Planet Fitness up on 23rd Avenue that was just left because they went down to Sam or to Best Buy. And they said, we would like a, I guess it would be a CC packaged sales. What would be the response and how would that play out?
You're right. And our job is to enforce the code. So at this time, there would not be a license available.
We would tell them no and show them the door because there's not a mechanism.
I have to, I'm gonna have to say that this Ms. Kostopoulos, you have a hand up. And we're gonna have to stick to our agenda. And those follow up questions on this topic should probably be addressed separately from this meeting with the clerk. Ms. Kostopoulos.
I and of course, you're correct about the agenda. I do want to point out that there is always the opportunity to bring up before you as council a vision to the ordinance to increase the cap by one or by two or by any number if to allow to raise a business to open. That is the way, by the way, the most communities operate.
Thank you for the clarification. We can continue the conversation at another time, Mr. Went. I'm sorry, we have to continue with our agenda.
It's not remain to Section Four. We're talking about the liquor code.
No, we've already taken a vote on that. And we're we're finished with item number 12. Please correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Madam Clerk.
We haven't voted on what we took off the table.
We voted on the amendment, Your Honor, not the actual.
Thank you. Thank you. I needed that clarification. All right. Please continue with your question, Mr. Went.
So what you're saying, Margaret, right now then is it comes to a staff member to make the determination. If that's a really good thing to advise them to come back with a request to amend our ordinance or or not. So if it's Bennies, clear, yes, let's 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 change it. But if it's a high end convenience store on River Drive, it may be no. Or if it's a back alley can be or liquor store, probably not. But the but right now, the way you're saying it is that it is a subjective decision by our clerk?
No, I'm not saying that at all. I'm saying that it is a subjective decision by you as a council.
But we don't know about it. I didn't know that somebody had made an application to put in the convenience store on River Drive until the developer reached out to me asking for help because he couldn't get anywhere with what he was requesting from the city.
To to your point, Mr. Went earlier, did you not say that some people are more savvy with understanding they can come and ask for things? I think, is that what you said previously? I think the process, just like it worked, just like it worked for Watermark Corners, they came and asked to up the cap and this council said yes. And that's.
Friends with the mayor.
Excuse me, I'm still talking, Mr. Went.
With the mayor, then you don't.
I'm gonna have to hold you in contempt if you talk over me when I'm not finished. Ms. Kostopoulos is explaining that that is the process that it's currently there. Now you may continue.
And what I'm asking for is equal treatment to all people who want to invest in this community. That the fact that you happen to know or be friends with the mayor, that you get some information about, yes, here's the process that we can make the change. But this other person who wants to invest in our community, who bought a multimillion dollar complex, moved it from 30% occupancy to 100% with a weight and is looking to invest more. They didn't get the, hey, maybe you should, we would be open to increasing the number or you have the option to increase the number. Was not informed of that at all. That is the problem. If we want to be developer friendly here and we want people to invest in the community, we can't have these arbitrary caps on different things. Or if you do say no, we have to have a system in place in which all of the elected officials are notified when we say no to people so that we can fix those things that we want to have done correctly or invested in our community.
Thank you, Ms. Kostopoulos.
So I think that, as I said before, the cap can work. Maybe what we have here is a communication problem. It could be that we need to better communicate to applicants that they have that ability. So it's not the procedure that is flawed. It's knowledge by applicants or would be applicants as to what their recourse would be.
Um, thank you for that explanation. And I will not let stand your comments about being knowing the mayor and getting attention. That is not appropriate. That process for that business was in place before I took office. And so I won't not let that comment stand that Ms. Kostopoulos is correct. We have a communication issue.
I apologize, but but the the idea that if you know elected officials, then you get to be told, hey, there are other ways and maybe we'll make some changes versus someone who is not connected is gets different information. And that's to to Ms. Kostopoulos's point is that if we're giving different communication to different people based on whatever the criteria is, that's an issue in our community if we want to grow and develop and move forward.
Okay, so this the motion on the table has to do with. Please restate it, Madam Clerk. I will recognize you, Ms. Kostopoulos.
So the current motion is just to remove item from the from the table. We're voting on the proposed amendment as amended this evening, which is striking in its entirety.
Thank you. Mr. Schmidt.
Wouldn't we be voting to literally do nothing?
Yeah, basically are because it's all been taken away.
Your Honor, if.
Mr. Timian.
I believe we struck the the caps. We did not strike including the new state provisions. Is that correct?
But we already voted on that last time.
Correct. You're right. So do we need a final vote on the thing as amended? Yeah.
Right.
Okay, so we're at that point. Hearing no further comments or questions. Roll call, please.
Alderman Waldron.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Nay.
Williams.
Aye.
Macias.
Nay.
Went.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Six ayes, two nays. That motion passes.
Thank you very much. We have no other tonight, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Questions on the agenda that I think must be a typo. We've already covered that. Is there any public comments with chief votes? Just give us a sign. You don't have to unmute. No. Okay. All right, we will close out that meeting and move to our regular council meeting. Call Pledge of Allegiance, please. Got a flag in my screen and one behind Mr. Bitas. I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God. Okay. Is there an invocation, Mr. Waldron?
No, you wouldn't want to hear it.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Alderman Williams.
Present.
Macias.
Present.
Went.
Present.
Timian.
Present.
Moyer.
Present.
O'Brien.
Present.
Waldron.
Present.
Schmidt.
Present.
Your Honor, I request approval of Committee of the Whole Council and Executive Session Meeting Minutes of January 11th, 2022, and Council and Executive Session Meeting Minutes of January 18th, 2022, and appointments made in Committee of the Whole January 25th, 2022. Resolutions. Council Bill 1009-2022, resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to a purchase agreement with FKC Company Limited for purchase of two sludge dewatering screw presses and auxiliary conveyance equipment, and authorizing the director of utilities to procure items directly from FKC Company Limited for installation at the North Slope Wastewater Treatment Plant in the amount of $1,116,568. Council Bill 1010-2022, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to a renewal of the Certified Water System Operator Contract for contractual operation of public water supply with the village of Coal Valley. Council Bill 1011-2022, a resolution authorizing the fleet and facilities manager to purchase four exterior doors, including installation for Heritage Place parking ramp for doors from Doors Incorporated for the amount of $19,624. Council Bill 1012-2022, a resolution authorizing the fleet and facilities manager to purchase four 2022 Ford Escape S sport utility vehicles from Sexton Ford for the amount of $88,672. Council Bill 1013-2022, a resolution authorizing the fleet and facilities manager to purchase 10 2022 Ford pickup trucks from Curie Motors Fleet for the amount of $345,744. Council Bill 1014-2022, a resolution approving and accepting proposed changes to prior contract language as agreed to by and between the negotiators to the City of Moline and the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge 77 related to wages, hours of work, and certain other conditions of employment for the contract term January 1st, 2022 through December 31st, 2024, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to an agreement incorporating said changes with the FOP Lodge 77 related to wages, hours, and work and certain other conditions of employment.
Your Honor, I move to approve consent agenda.
Second, Schmidt.
Thank you. Alderman O'Brien, seconded by Alderman Schmidt. Roll call, please.
Alderman Waldron.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
Thank you very much. And this is where we go to Resolution 1008-2022, correct, Madam Clerk?
Correct. Non consent agenda resolutions beginning with 1008-2022, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to licensing agreements for 2022 permanent approved applications for use of public right of way or city owned property.
Motion to approve.
Alderman Schmidt, seconded by Alderman Timian? No.
O'Brien.
O'Brien, thank you very much. Discussion. Thank you.
I thank you, Your Honor. So I I mostly support this. My I have absolutely no problem with with the renewals. I just think I just feel strongly that any new permit should probably come to council. So I don't know. Is that something I would make a motion to to suggest or?
To amend the.
To amend it that that need any new permittee would then come to council for approval?
Madam, Ms. Kostopoulos.
I'll second that.
That that's as an amendment, correct?
Yes, please.
So.
Point of clarification, point of order, point of clarification, yes.
What is a new permit?
So. Let me go to the. So there are a number of of I guess uses or a number of companies that are doing work in our corridor. And if someone was to come in with a new. I don't really have the language for this. Some kind of new purpose for working in our right of way, then they would come with a brand, I suppose, some kind of work plan for what they're going to do. And then that would be something that we would approve. But if it's if it's a work plan that's already been approved, they would get the permits that they need from time to time as it's being suggested by this ordinance.
I do want to point out that telecommunications companies have the right by law to work in the right of way.
Thank you. So just so for the record, this this amendment has been moved and seconded. So we're in discussion period. Thank you, Mr. Went.
Thank you, Your Honor. Margaret, you said that a number of times where telecommunications companies. But and I've asked for, I think, a white paper on this, but I don't think we've ever received it. And if I did, I apologize that I missed it, but I don't think we have. That you are correct. I mean, the telecommunications acted and and the state ordinance did talk about like telephone lines and those sorts of things. But from my reading and and I think actually talking with attorneys in in your firm, that that does not cover like that they can do whatever they want and or if they're providing video or 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 other things through their communications. uh, things through their communications, that, um, that then puts them into a different category and that there are some restrictions that we can, uh, supply on that. Uh, again, I, I have not done the independent, uh, um, uh, reading of the statute and I am no, in no way an expert, but I have been told that by others, and that's why I was looking for a, a white paper, uh, on that information. Because I, uh, my, my fear is that we're using a, a general term that may apply to 1996, uh, technology, but doesn't necessarily, uh, pertain to what we're talking about and the work that is happening and the issues that, uh, and, and, and staff did say 2021 was a unique year of the issues that we had of working in the right of way and, and our sidewalks being torn up for all summer. And I still have places where there are barricades and, and piles of dirt and, and those sorts of things. And I think to this point is to be able to have some kind of control over this. Because right now, it just seemed like licenses were, were signed, things happened, and, uh, there was no, um, uh, corralling, uh, what was going on. And, and I, I share Alderman Moyer's concern. And I know that, you know, in, in the second ward, it was a, it was a, a war zone to, to get through. If, if you were in a wheelchair or had trouble, uh, uh, um, uh, moving with mobility to get from one block to another was nearly impossible. And so that's where my concern is, and I, and I, I really think that we should get some clarification on that.
I have a question, Madam, Ms. Costopoulos. Uh, is the review of permits in general considered administrative work or legislative work or some combination of both?
There's really administrative work. Permits by your code are authorized to be issued by staff. So this would be a very new procedure. And Alderman went to your question about might be covered or what work might be covered by the telephone company act. It was sort of catch me a little bit unprepared as I have not researched uh, case law on what is under that act, a telecommunication company. The, what the opinion that was given to me by Adam Simon, who is actually an expert in this area, was that your uh, Genesee Communication, uh, Metronet, MediaCom, the companies that you have, well, some of which you have raised concern about would all fall in that definition.
Mr. Vitas had his hand raised first.
Yeah, you know, my experience in dealing with this issue is that there's a number of things, and, and Margaret, maybe you can weigh in. One, we refer to these as licensing agreements. And then we have right-of-way permits. And really, I see those as two distinct and unique things. And here, we're giving people licensing agreements to go out and actually perform work in the right of way. All right. So I'm a little confused on, on why we use licensing agreements when in reality, that means something entirely different than an engineering department or public works department issuing a right-of-way permit, which of course, we understand the law. I saw Adam's email. I read it. I've been watching this now for, for quite a while. Uh, and, uh, that's one side of one question I have and concern. The concern I have a, actually, you know, relates to our ability to stay on top of all of these permits that we issue, because if you look at that list of permits that went out, and it was a positive list, you know, and it was pretty much people putting fiber in, I mean, everywhere. I mean, there were all kinds of contractors who were out there actually installing fiber. It wasn't just our major ISP providers like AT&amp;T or MediaCom or Genesee or Metrolink, you know, building their backbone through here. So you have all those other players who are getting these permits and, and, and they're out there disrupting the right of way as well. So when you have that much disruption happening during a construction season, um, we have to have the ability to staff, properly staff, and monitor what they're doing. And I know that, you know, engineering and I know that, that public works are, are doing their best probably to do that. But I, I want to keep that in mind, but I still want the answer to the question, why a licensing agreement when we know that they're right of way?
Thank you, Mr. Went.
Fix it.
Well, i- and, and that's exactly to my point. I mean, Margaret, you said that this is administrative. Well, if this is just administrative like permits would be, then why have we been doing this prior, you know, prior to whatever it was six years ago? Every single license came to the, uh, the council. And then we came up with this thing where we'll give you rights, but every year you got to come back and, and renew this thing. That's not administrative at all. And so, I, I mean, because we're, basically, we are deferring or, um, assigning our legislative, uh, rights under these licenses, uh, to just unilaterally just go and, and sign them. So to, 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 um, administrator of Vitas's point, I, I agree. That's where I think all of this confusion, I don't think we've got any clarity on it. And it would be great if staff would come back and help us understand and, and help the city administrator understand what, which things are permits and which things are licenses and why we're kind of conflating the two.
Ms. Costopoulos?
So if, if this helps at all, first of all, we actually have a committee who is looking at this and working on why this practice developed as well as is there a better way to do it? But secondly, it's my understanding, and unfortunately, Joe Kolenbach is sick tonight and can't, uh, chime in here. But it's my understanding that licensing agreements are for a number of projects that might occur in a season that take place in the right of way, generally by these companies, uh, like Metronet, Genesee, those. Then for each specific project, they request a permit.
Thank you.
As it happens, we have a meeting actually tomorrow to continue talking about.
Thank you. Mr. Went?
With, with that being said, I mean, if there's still some confusion, we got a committee that's trying to figure out why this even started or what's happening with it. What I'd like to do is, uh, table this motion until staff feels the appropriate time to come back with appropriate answers and, and, and then we'll review this. Because voting on this where staff doesn't know, our administrator doesn't know, we don't know what we're voting on, seems ludicrous.
Does there a second, Mr. Moyer? Uh, thank you. All right. Motion is to table this until staff can bring it back.
Your honor, can we table the main motion during an amendment motion?
Lord, that's a great question for.
You can table the whole thing.
I think you can table anything anytime.
Thank you.
Um, all right. So roll call, please.
Alderman Waldron?
Nay.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Nay.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Six ayes, two nays?
All right. Thank you. Oh. Madam Clark.
Okay, moving on to, um, additional resolutions on the not consent agenda. Council Bill 1015-2022, a resolution establishing the American Rescue Plan Act Childcare Workforce Infrastructure Forgivable Loan Program for relief to assist families and businesses that have been negatively impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic with quality childcare options.
Move to consider.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Is there a second?
Second. Timian.
Seconded by Mr. Timian.
Point of inquiry.
Yes.
I, I just want to make sure to, to consider, you need two-thirds, uh, vote to consider this. Is that correct?
This is actually just, we just need a motion to approve because it's a resolution. We only consider ordinances?
I'll, I'll change my motion to move to approve.
Thank you.
All right. So that's a modified motion. Mr. Timmy, any second that still or no?
Yes, your honor.
Thank you. Uh, all right, discussion. Mr. Moyer?
Thank you. Um, we, during the regular discussion, we had talked about maybe getting some more information about affordability. And I would just like to ask that we, um, table this for one week so that we can have an opportunity to, um, consider some of the information we got tonight. I, I am very much in support of the general idea of this. I would like a chance to understand some more about, um, the affordability and some of the other things we talked about tonight.
I'll second that. Second that.
A motion to table for a week by Alderman Moyer, seconded by Alderman Went. Uh, roll call, please.
Alderman Waldron?
Nay.
Alderman Schmidt?
Nay.
Williams?
Aye.
Macias?
Nay.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Nay.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Three ayes, five nays. And the motion to table fails.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Went?
I, I'd like to, uh, make a motion to amend, um, where, uh, all locations in which it talks about there being a 10-day, uh, window for, uh, Moline residents and, uh, employees of Moline, uh, that that be clarified, that, uh, that 10-day, uh, open period, uh, shall, uh, be, um, applied at any, any time, uh, new openings, uh, happen at the, uh, the location, um, uh, during the, the length of the program for, I guess it's only the 36 months, but yeah.
Anytime, got it. So 10-day priority enrollment for Moline families or, uh, wo- workers of Moline businesses for, uh, good lord, I need you to say it one more time. I was writing it, but I just, say it one more time, please. Thank you.
So that the, oh, sorry. So the hold period of the 10 days shall apply to all open slots?
At any time during the.
Any time during the, uh, the program.
Got it. Thank you. Is there a second to that amendment, Mr. Moyer?
I'll second.
Thank you. Yes, and you have a comment question?
I do. I, I'm, uh, I was going to make a motion along the same lines, um, that does the exact same thing. I just, I think that any time that there's a waiting list, that, you know, the Moline resident would always then move to the top or the Moline business owner. So, yeah.
And that is something we talked about as a committee, that that, that that is what the intent here is.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam, Ms. Costopoulos, what, were you going to say anything?
I, well, I just wanted to ensure that that 10-day window, is that applied to applicants for the money or for applicants for the service?
It's the applicants for the money. They have to have a 10-day window to prioritize enrollment for Moline-based people.
Just the award winners. I mean, if you applied and didn't get it, you don't have to.
Right. Correct. It's only for, under this program. I saw Mr. Timian's hand and then Mr. Vitas.
I, I have a, a quick question for clarity and then a follow-up, uh, statement to that. Um, i- is this to say that every time there is an opening, that 10-day window applies? Is that correct, your honor?
Correct.
Okay. I understand the sentiment. I don't think it is, uh, within our purview to legislate businesses and, and, and to that degree. Uh, i- it feels very big government to me. Um, so I'm going to vote no on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Vitas, you had your hand up and?
Yeah, you know, just, just a, a question, um, and it, perhaps it's programmatic and procedural. But, you know, you have this application period that's going to be running, right? We all know that. And it's going to run until the money expires. So you have two tranches of money, 250 this year and possibly two, under 250 next year, unless somebody comes back and is so successful, we need to do something differently. But in, from the time that they make application, because the application process will take time. Then there's the review process by the committee. You know, what triggers the start and end date of the 10 days? What specifically triggers it? So that I know, you know, from a staff standpoint, how to administer this program.
Right. It's a, they have to, well, KJ can answer this.
Really, it's an important question. Because that 10 days is a very short wait. I mean, that's basically five, five business, not even 10 full business days.
The, I'll let KJ answer, but that was the recommendation of the professionals in the field because of the statement you heard earlier where limiting income earning by holding a spot open for too long would defeat some of the purpose. In any case, Ms. Whitley?
Thank you. Bob, can you repeat your question one more time? Sorry, I was walking back into the room.
Uh-huh. All right. Well, the question is, is what actually, what will trigger the start of the 10 days? Is it the day they get a letter from the city saying, wow, the money's yours? Or 10 days from the date that they either opened their doors for business or they opened their doors as an expanded business? And is the 10 days two-part question and business days or 10 calendar?
Uh, 10 calendar days and then from the date of the second payment of the funds.
Yeah. Just double checking. Everybody's clear. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Went, you were not, you had your hand raised?
Uh, yeah, thank you, your honor. Uh, I mean, when we're giving out tens of thousands of dollars, we absolutely have the right, uh, so, and, and I'm sure, uh, Margaret will, uh, agree with this. We, we have the right. If it's a policy decision, Alderman, to me, completely understandable. But, uh, and, and if I had my druthers, I would say, uh, 10 business days, but I don't think that that would have a chance of passing through this group. Uh, so I'm at least just trying to do this because if the idea is that this is for, supposed to be for the benefit of Moline residents and Moline businesses, and we have such a glut of, um, uh, people out there that are, that are needing this and such a low amount of, uh, uh, it being offered, uh, those things should be snapped up, uh, uh, easily within that, uh, that 10-day, uh, timeframe.
Thank you.
And, and, and another clarification, while, while KJ says for the first time, the 10-day starts, I, I, I think that that's from when a slot becomes available. And then the same would be for during the entire program, as soon as the slot becomes available and is being, and, I guess, for clarification, it should be, and is being advertised. You can't be like sitting on it.
Yes.
And, yeah.
Yes, and that we have those requirements for advertising written in there. Uh, thank you. Any further comments or questions on this amendment? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Alderman Waldron?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Macias?
Nay.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Nay.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Six ayes, two nays?
Thank you very much. All right. Further discussion, Mr. Went?
Yeah, I'd like to make a, a, another amendment that under the program eligibility requirements, that, uh, for anyone to be, uh, eligible, that they have to, uh, actually increase, uh, the number of slots. the number of slots that they are providing at least one for every two thousand dollars that they are provided.
Second.
Uh. Second by Alderman Moyer. Discussion. Mr. Went.
Yeah, I mean, the purpose for this is if you read through this, there is no, I mean, the whole purpose that we keep talking about is we don't have enough slots. We don't have enough slots. And if you read through this, that is not a requirement. This will ensure that it is a requirement. Now, they may get extra points if they have the slots in the evening or overnight, terrific. But that there is a requirement within this program that they there actually is an increase in the number of slots that that are provided to the community.
Uh, I have a practice. No, I don't have a practical question. It's fine. Yes, Mr. Moyer, did you have a question?
No, I just, I really believe that that there should be some requirement, and I don't know if five is the right number. Again, we don't really have the ability to find out, but there should be some kind of number. There should be some kind of requirement that we're actually going to be increasing capacity with regard to this money. So, yeah, I'm voting yes.
I do have one thing to point out. Maybe KJ, do you want to speak to this? But these businesses are regulated by size, right? So they cannot simply increase a slot space, open a slot space if it doesn't fall under the guidelines from DCFS, correct? So, um, that practically would really mostly apply to new businesses or people who could expand and pay for another staff member to cover, to 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 expand and be bigger. I just wanted to put that out there and practically speaking, so. Mr. Went.
It will.
Go ahead, KJ, and then Mr. Went.
Thank you, ma'am. Sorry about that. It would be very challenging for the home daycares. You know, maybe your license is only good for four kids and you're getting ten thousand dollars. So by Mr. Went's amendment, you would need five slots. But you're only, you know, can only have four in your home. Uh, so it's going to be very challenging along those, along that route.
Thank you. Mr. Went.
But you have to remember, the these are up to those amounts. There's no require, I mean, so if 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 they need a little bit and we're going to add one more slot, well, then they could get two thousand. And then that I think that what this will do is maximize. So if you've got a place that is can can get you know, four people and they're only having two and they say, okay, four thousand dollars will get us to be able to have two more here. Great. But then that would leave us more money for other locations that might be new or or able to increase or move from one licensing scene to another to hire an assistant or whatever, need that for a signing bonus, whatever the the case may be to 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 do that and move those forward. I just think that this is a great way to ensure the goal that we just keep talking about is that we need more spots and and ensure that.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Schmidt.
I I think that number in line with the program as it's laid out is just very unreasonable. It completely kills any opportunity for business retention and to stop spots from going away, which I think is an important part of this program. You know, as someone who's had to move their kids when a daycare closed, I mean, it happens and then you're left scrambling and that's a bad thing for for people in this community as well. And it also would eliminate entire sections of projects where that kind of cost prohibit would 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 basically knock out any project that would go to support a disabled individual. Um, any daycare that wanted to renovate based on a disabled child would probably need to exceed that. It may not be adding a spot. So I just think I get what you're trying to do. I think that number is unreasonable. I mean, when we talk about the fifty thousand dollar awards, especially, that's just not feasible. And so I don't support it.
Thank you. Mr. Went.
Is is there a number that that you feel is reasonable? I I mean, if if the idea and and I appreciate the idea for for the disabled and and maybe you tweak it to say additional spot or to make the place AD accessible or whatever, I I would absolutely appreciate and and support something like that. Is there a number that makes sense? Because otherwise, I mean, we've got this 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 program out there, but there is no guarantee that I'm sure there will be some that increase the number and the new ones will, but they just will anyway. That we can ensure that there is actually a substantial increase if we're investing a half a million dollars into this.
Thank you. Mr. Macias.
Um, yeah, there was also talks about retention. We don't know how many of these we might lose because they can't afford to fix up their places. We it really is up to those individuals, whether it's a home or a more commercial place, they know their business better. So they'll know how to use it better. It is a loan, and if they don't comply, they're going to have to pay back. So I I think once we start putting, you know, these dollars and these numbers, it is just a guessing game. I wouldn't know exactly what number that would be. But but really, they they know their business is better and it's hard for us to dictate the exact number that they they have to meet if they don't add additional spots.
Thank you. The I would want to point out the practicality pieces that there are two groups of entrepreneurs in this industry that we're attempting to help. And it is much easier for those that are creating totally new childcare centers or in-home centers to absolutely show the increased slots. It is very easy for an existing center to meet the need of changing their hours to meet that need we have for second and third shift or weekend, right? That they may not have the flexibility or the opportunity to expand an actual slot, but they're actually helping the the community with the need for different kinds of coverage or those slots are open at a different time of day, and that's the expansive quality. And so I I'm not speaking for or against this amendment. I'm just pointing out practically. This is why the, you know, what some might consider a looser language on that particular piece is there because you have multiple categories of businesses working. Yes, Mr. Went.
I I appreciate that comment and and you make a wonderful point. So I'll make an amendment to my amendment that says that to not only two thousand dollars for each increased spot, alternatively, a and a slot that has adjusted time to those secondary hours.
Is there a second to that amendment to an amendment?
I'll second it.
All right. Seconded by Mr. Moyer. Discussion. Uh, Mr. Went.
Yeah, I think that 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 covers your concern about some of them, it is transitioning into that. And I couldn't agree with you more. I mean, we talk about it in the intro that we need second shift and and overnight and everything, but we've got nothing in here that guarantees that at all. But if you have some kind of teeth to this thing that says, hey, you have to increase spots or you have to a adjust to the other time, then we start to actually solve the issues of not having enough spots or not having enough spots in in alternatives timeframes.
Any further discussion on this amendment? With to the amendment? Yes, Mr. Schmidt.
More generally, under the whole proposal and in direct answer to Alderman's went question, I have three issues with with the changes we're looking at. Only one of them is a dollar figure. So I don't believe there's a dollar figure that answers my other two concerns regarding business retention or other uses that fall outside of building up new spots.
All right. So we are going to take a vote on the amendment to the amendment, correct, Madam Clerk? And legal counsel, thank you, which is the adding the adjusted time to these requirements for increased slots.
Your Honor.
Is that a question? Yes, Mr.?
Yeah. As you were on the in Alderman Schmidt's comment about this brought this up, you were part of the group that put this together. Was there any thought or discussion regarding exactly what Alderman Schmidt talked about is that I think we're talking about two different things. We're talking about increasing slots and we're talking about retention. That that it what probably would be the best thing for us to do is to have a program that is bifurcated in which we have some funds with requirements for those that are retaining. You know, we're already at max capacity. We're just, you know, trying to adjust this to improve the place so that we can stay open and and those sorts of things. And then another portion that goes after actually increasing the numbers because the way that it's written right now, it's kind of in that no man's land in between and it's not really ensuring either.
Uh, I think that I I think I I hear what you're saying and certainly we talked about a variety of ways to do things. The point here, Alderman, uh-oh, that's what the E is that there are extra credit points for the people who can really invest in these things that we are trying to do. So your check and balance could be what Mr. Went is proposing in his amendments, or it simply could be the number of points that people are actually eligible to for to get to seventy. And that's why those extra credit points are there is to push people into getting that work done. So so I just point that out as another way to get to the objectives. Um, Mr. Went.
My concern with that is if that's the case, then we should have much more heavily weighted things like increasing the number of slots because you get five points. I mean, you get five points for completing an application. I can't believe that we're accepting things that aren't a complete application. I mean, it says in one location that that that's a spread of zero to five points or whatever for completing it. But there's another place in there that says that if it's not complete, I guess you you don't consider it at all. So I don't know how you get five points for something that the alternative is you're you're not eligible. And so if that's the case, those points need to be increased for the 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 new spots that are being created.
Thank you. Uh, so the I was at the place of a roll call on the amendment to the amendment. Uh, Clerk.
Correct. Alderman Walden.
Aye.
Thank you. Alderman Schmidt.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Timian.
Nay.
Moyer.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Nay.
Six ayes, two nays.
All right. So that amendment to the amendment passes. That means we're adding the adjusted time as one of the qualifiers. So we're back to the amendment as as amended. Uh, discussion. Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Sorry, I'm still flipping back to Mr. Vote Box.
This is, this is again, anyone increasing slots by one for for every two thousand dollars provided as a requirement and now also the or the qualification of an adjusted time of operation.
Alderman Walden.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Nay.
Williams.
Aye.
Macias.
Nay.
Went.
Aye.
Timian.
Nay.
Moyer.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Four ayes, four nays. Your Honor, would you like to vote?
Yes, I vote nay. Thank you.
And that motion fails.
So I believe we are at the motion itself. Any further discretion? Mr. Went.
Uh, yeah, there's a provision in here that that talks about paying rent or or mortgage just for the the section. I I think that that and I completely understand if you're renting a place from some disinterested arms-length person, but oftentimes organizations will, you know, you'll have your business, but then there'll be you might also control the an LLC that owns the property itself. So you you pay yourself rent or again, or you own the home and you're paying yourself mortgage as as part of it. Uh, what I'd like to do is make an amendment that those payments would be disallowed for properties that are owned by the principal or family members or controlled by those individuals.
Second.
I I need some clarity. So we got you got that motion and second by Went and Moyer. Thank you. Please clarify for me, Mr. Went, you're saying that the owner of the building. No, please just restate that for me.
So for instance, I'll just I'll just use the business I work. I work at Rule and Rule Realtors, right? The building that we're in is actually owned by Caroline Rule, but it's not owned by Rule and Rule Realtors. It's owned by South Park Properties or or something like that. And Rule and Rule Realtors pays rent to it, but Caroline controls both entities. And so whether she, you know, and so in in this case, if if they are paying themselves rent or an entity that they control or they're paying a mortgage on a property that they individually own other than the the business itself, then I that should be a disqualifying payment. Because basically, it's just enriching themselves. It's just transferring the money over to themselves.
Good. Thank you. Mr. Timian.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll lower my hand. I think that this is bad because if you're talking about a family business where they're running it out of their home and they they pay mortgage to themselves or heaven forbid, a spouse runs the daycare and the house is in the husband's name. Now, you you can't use any of that money or you have to account for it in a certain way. And the the nature of this proposal, the whole bill, is to help an industry really in any way possible, both expand and stay open and service the the people who most need it. And the more and more we we try to like clip wings and and gate these things, I think the less we're we're really getting towards the the nature of what we're trying to do here. And and so I I will oppose this all day long. Thank you, Your Honor.
Any further questions? Hearing none. Uh, Mr. Schmidt.
Yeah, and the inclusion of mortgages particularly is troubling because I think that is the case with with an in-home daycare. I mean, the the definition of how that is calculated and how that is done is something that is is regulated by the state and done through that procedure. And I just think getting out of line with that doesn't make any sense.
Thank you. All right, hearing. No further comment. Roll call, please.
Could I clarify who the second was on that motion?
Moyer.
Thank you. Alderman Walden.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Nay.
Williams.
Aye.
Macias.
Nay.
Went.
Oh, aye.
Timian.
Nay.
Moyer.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Nay.
Four ayes, four nays, Your Honor.
Uh, yes, I vote nay.
And that motion fails.
Thank you. Back to the motion on the table. And just keep in mind, I know we have business to discuss. It's nine thirty. Thank you, Mr. Went.
Thank you, Your Honor. And and I think almost all of these things were were stuff I sent in weeks ago. Some of the changes were made and others weren't. So.
Yes, and to your point about that, that is because the committee talked through everything and we this is the proposal on the table that they believe will work.
And and I wasn't saying that to the to to the to that group, but one Alderman had said earlier, we've had this for weeks. And so this should have been raised before or something to that effect. So I I'm just clarifying. It has been, all of these things have been brought up before. And so I thought that it was appropriate that that this group and the public knows about it and we're on record for those those votes. Uh, in the selection process, and maybe KJ, you can help me understand this. In here, it talks about the selection process and priorities, like, you know, that there's some subjective nature to it that we're going to give priority to new locations, increase educational programs. nature to it, that we're going to give priority to new locations, increase educational programs, those sorts of things. But then that's at number one. And then underscoring, it talks about that as long as you hit that 70-point threshold, then basically whoever has the most points down to whoever has the least points, they shall be selected for funding. So how does that work? If you got your points, you're getting the money. So the priorities, how, how does that work into that?
It's kind of like when we apply for a LED grant with HUD. You know, you have like five, six categories where you're asked questions on and that you're scored on. Some are going to have more points given to you while other ones are going to have less points given to you. But as long as you meet that threshold, you get a grant. Not everyone's going to score a perfect score on these applications. But, you know, we're going to read into their business plan, look at their budget and take all that into account and, you know, develop a score for each application that's received. So not, not everyone's going to have the perfect, you know, business plan that you might be looking for. But as long as it has the key components and it's scored, that's what we're looking for in these applications.
And, and I completely understand that under number two, and, and that seems to be pretty clear. But my question is, then why do we have number one as for, as far as priorities? And it says the selection process will give priority to the following. Because this, the scoring process seems objective. Like we, we gave this one 36 points on this category and 15 points on that quarter. And so you've got your numbers. And so you, at the end of the day, you, you've got your numbers and this one's got 105 points. This one's got 97 points. This one's got 82 points. They all, provided that they're still funding, they, they all get, get funded. But number one seems to, to talk about some other subjective priorities. And I don't know how that fits into this.
Well, again, there's not a model out there for this program. And the model that I looked at when I wrote this program is how the federal government does their grants and how they give a score for each category. And based on the cumulative amount, you could either receive a, a grant if you scored at least the minimum requirement. And then you would work with, you know, technical rep as you administer that grant. And that's basically what we're doing here. They're going to be working with staff along the way. We're going to be monitoring the process. We ask for different kinds of reports as a staff member for people who get the grants. So we do plan to have oversight on these grants.
So Ms. Whitley, it, it sounds like what you're saying is the objective scores are the primary place you're looking. And there's a secondary layer of these priorities that, that meet the objectives of the proposal that you also look at. And that's based on what you, what you see with HUD or federal applications.
Correct.
Thank you. Mr. Went?
If that's the case, then, then section two's got to be changed. That says, hey, if you meet 70 points, then we will go to the priorities above to make a determination on who gets what. But that's not what it says. It says that applicants ranking highest in competitive category order according to the scoring criteria detailed above shall be selected for funding subject to the amount of funds that are available in each group. So I mean, it, it's really clear in number two that we, we take the numbers. This are how you get funded. But if, if what the intent is not that, but rather as long as you hit 70, then we will look at number one and, and take those priorities into, to account. And then regardless, if you're a higher scorer or a lower scorer, we're going to give it to the ones that we feel meet our priorities A, B, C, and D above. Is that what your intent is?
No, like I was trying to explain, Alderman Went. That language was taken directly out of the NOFA, the Notice of Funding Availability for the most recent LED grant where you have a minimum score that the applicant needs to achieve. And then you're going to start at whoever has the highest score until the funding runs out as you do the awards. Directly out of the NOFA, that language was taken.
Thank you. Mr. Schmidt and then Mr. O'Brien.
Yeah, and as I'm, I pulled this up and I'm looking at it, I read it exactly the way KJ just described it. And even with that shall, because it is, it is talking about ranking them first and then they shall be selected for funding according to that rank, subject to funds available. So I think, I, I guess as I read it, it does exactly what KJ just said. I don't have any concerns with that language.
Well, when you say according to that rank, are you talking about the point of inquiry?
Fine, thank you.
Alderman Schmidt, point of inquiry. Are, are you saying, when you say, well, shall be, it says shall be selected from the funding subject to the, the availability. But it, it talks about the scoring criteria. I mean, it says applicants ranking highest in competitive category order according to the scoring criteria detailed above, which is all the, the points up to 125, shall be selected for funding subject to the amounts of funds available for each group. Where does?
That last clause says, says that it will be where the highest would be awarded. And they, and then it works its way down until there's either no money or it moves on.
I can, but how does number one, the subjective priorities above come into that?
Well, that would play into how we would grade the essays.
Correct. How you, how you score.
You have, you, the actual items being scored, several of which are written explanations, the community impact statement, the actual impact of the program, that is where those things would play into.
So that, so that should be clarified that that's what that's being used for. It's not during the selection process. It's during the grading process of.
That's all rolled together. The grading process is, is, is part of, and you have to have that to do the selection. To Mr. O'Brien, who had his hand raised.
Your Honor, I call a question.
You move to call the question? Thank you. Is there a second on that?
Second.
Uh, motion by Alderman O'Brien, seconded by Alderman Timian. Uh, roll call please.
Alderman Waldron?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Nay.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Nay.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Six ayes, two nays.
Okay, the question has been called. A motion on the floor that is to adopt the resolution. Then we go right into roll call? Please, someone remind me, it's 9:30. I need help.
Yes. We had one amendment. So it's Council Bill 1015-2022 as amended.
Thank you.
Alderman Waldron?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Nay as written.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Nay.
Alderman O'Brien?
Aye.
Four ayes, four nays, Your Honor?
Yes, I vote aye.
And that motion passes.
Thank you. Oh, sorry, Clerk, it's, you're up.
Thank you.
Council meeting.
Council Bill 1016-2022, a resolution authorizing the fleet and facilities manager to sole source the purchase and installation of equipment for the upfitting of six 2022 police interceptor utility vehicles and one 2022 Ford F-150 police responder for, from Federal Signal for the amount of $114,805.08
Motion to approve, Timian?
Uh, motion by Timian, seconded by, was it? Good Lord, was that Went?
Moyer. Whoever.
Thank you. Discussion. Hearing none, roll call please.
Alderman Waldron?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays. And that motion passes. Council Bill 1017-2021, I'm sorry, 2022, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to a payment in lieu of taxes cooperation agreement between the Greater Metropolitan Area Housing Authority of Rock Island County and Illinois Municipal Corporation and the City of Moline for the property referred to as Heartland Park Elderly Living Center.
Move to approve.
Motion Alderman Went, is there a second? Alderman Macias? Thank you, Alderman Macias. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Alderman Waldron?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays. And that motion passes. Council Bill 1018-2022, a resolution approving an engineering and business consulting agreement with CTC Technology and Energy and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with CTC Technology and Energy to conduct market research and prepare requests for proposals to identify an additional broadband provider in Moline.
Move to approve with the two stipulations identified during the council of the whole.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion by Went, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Williams. Thank you. Discussion. Hearing none, roll call please.
Alderman Waldron?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays. And that motion passes. And that is all I have this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you. Missing business, Mr. Williams.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Thank you. Mr. Macias?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Mr. Went?
Thank you, Your Honor. I, I guess I just, I just want to make this, this comment regarding this, this council. I, I appreciate during the council meeting allowing for further discussion, we wind up with an amendment that I think made the childcare better. But this is exactly why we don't rush these things through. And we were provided the stuff, but to talk about this in open session together to work through it, closing debate on that. If you want to be a transparent council that, that wants to hear from the public and, and what is going on, shutting down debate is inexcusable. Because if, if that would have happened again, we wouldn't have made one of the, the changes that I thought was, like I said, made, made this better. But this is, moving forward, I hope that we do not wind up in situations where we railroad things through like this any longer. I've been on council now for six and a half years. And traditionally, unless it was a situation in which it was an emergency, we had to do it for some kind of grant or, or whatever, we did not put these things basically for consideration on the same thing. It then gave the public the ability to see it, to review it, for us to go out and get feedback from the public, not from just some small group of people, but from everyone in the community. And oftentimes there would be information in the newspaper and then we'd be able to get feedback. The way that this was handled tonight was wrong. And I hope that we don't do business like this moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. Timian.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is probably more of an open-ended question. I had a resident reach out about figuring out a way to get over or around the train if it stopped or if it's in one of its long holding sessions while you're trying to get to River Drive and you just can't. I don't know if there has been any discussion. I know there has been. I don't know what the resolution is on that. So if, if, I'm just mentioning this while everyone's here. If, if you've been part of these discussions before, if there is a plan to maybe add some sort of bridges, I know that that's easier said than done with the space we have. Please reach out to me. I'd like to see what we can come up with as a council to maybe get something figured out in the, the following years. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Mr. Moyer?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to basically do a shout out. You know, we, we talk a lot about trying to develop housing in the city. And we had that lot on 10th Avenue 30, I don't know where it's at anymore, 27th Street. It's such a hard lot to get built. And, you know, Mr. Lodi, Mr. Schenk came up with solutions. And Mr. Lodi, his whole department. I just, a big shout out to those guys for getting out there and finding those water mains and, and, or water lines and water service and sewers. Just really appreciate it. This is a, a nice house that's going to get built. It's going to be a good source of tax income, et cetera, et cetera. And it makes a family, a Moline family really happy. So just a big shout out to those guys and thank you for the great customer service.
Thank you.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Mr. Waldron?
Yes, Your Honor, I've been a little busy tonight designing some LED service replacements. But other than that, good meeting. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. Mr. Schmidt?
I just want to pass on a, a thank you from a constituent, specifically from my own father, who lives in a condo and their water was nearly shut off because they had multiple connections at the, or one connection at the street to multiple units. One of the units was, was vacant and our water department really went above and beyond and contacted and reached out and said, hey, we noticed there's gonna, we're gonna cut off paying customers and not just the ones who weren't paying. And they just really went through a good process. And knowing that that happened in one situation, I just trust it's happening in others. So a big thank you from, from me and from my father who had that experience with the city of just helping take care and not just shut things down and, and make a problem where there didn't need to be one. So thank you.
Thank you very much. I only have one update and that is just to put something on your radar, you know, as, as we look at the strategic plan and some of the things that have been talked about regarding workforce development and things like that. I wanted you to know that one of the working groups that's been working alongside the housing and shelter insecurity one and the, the one around workforce infrastructure is one about a public works internship. So that group consisted of Leah Miller, of course, through HR, Tony Lodi, Joe Kuhl and Beck, Margaret has sat in. Who am I forgetting from staff? I don't think anyone else. Oh, we did consult with union leadership as it relates to employment and human resources. But also from the school district, Dr. Savage, who then engaged her high school administrators. And they've looked at together a public works internship, as I mentioned. And so that intergovernmental agreement has been worked on and that will be coming forward to you all in the near future because the idea is to make sure high school students have a chance to tour facilities and get an idea of what's possible and then to apply for these internships. And, and anyway, there'll be much more coming. But rather than adding an informational today, I just wanted to let you know that that's another thing coming related to working with academic partners. And I believe that's one of the objectives in the strategic plan as well as looking into internships. So, no public comment, I don't believe. So executive session. Mr. Williams?
Your Honor, I make a motion that the council convene an executive session for the purpose of discussion of review of executive session minutes five ILCS 120/2 C21.
Thank you, Mr. Williams and Mr. Went. Roll call please.
Alderman Waldron?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.